...meeting. And so the question I always get is can we give you an ETA? I would imagine since we started 10 minutes late that we will be resuming the right, the rest of the regular council meeting at 6:10. And I will do everything I can to get council to stick to that time. So somewhere around 6:10, certainly not earlier, is when we will resume the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
And it looks like, is Sylvia here? Can you hear me Sylvia?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Are you still logged into the other meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So I left it and then I was left and then realized as an organizer does that end the meeting for everybody?
No. No, the meeting is still going.
Great. I just didn't want my microphone to get too short. I'll pick something else. Okay, so I do see a name that if anybody, I'm gonna...
Mayor, you need to mute your go-to. They can still hear you.
What was that?
I think you're talking through your phone because we can hear you.
I'm not talking through my phone.
Sylvia, you don't need to give me a name count, but if you'll just tell me, just let me know when all the council members show that they're here and then I'll start the meeting up.
All of the council are here.
Thank you. We are reconvening regular city council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. We are reconvening at 6:22. Thank you very much for the residents who are logged in. And I apologize if this was not the preference. When we put them at the end, there's some people that that bothers. And so we wanted to get the city administrator's six-month evaluation completed. So we are now picking up at item number two, which is the six-month review of the city administrator and acceptance of the same by city council. And if there are any motions from council members, if you would please raise your hand. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we set goals for the city administrator for the next six months. And the goal I'd like to see set is that within the next six months, we have open gov, fully functional with residents, council, and committees familiar with the use and our community engaged in the process.
Thank you. We have a motion. Councilmember Reitz? Councilmember Reitz, did you want to speak? You had your hand up.
I'm mute. Okay. Sorry. I didn't realize I was muted. I will second the motion. And I wanted to add, my goal was, which was to continue to navigate through this COVID crisis where we end up with a financially viable position. We have continued to deliver essential services and engage residents.
We now have a motion and a second. This opens it for deliberation. Are there any additional goals? There are two goals that have been listed as part of this motion. Does the motion maker accept the goal that was added by the second?
Yes, I do.
And I'm looking to see, and... Are there any additional goals that council members would like to add to this?
Mayor, councilmember Gonzalez has noted that she can't hear, so...
Let me see if I can... She's, she can't hear us. Well, councilmember Gonzalez, you are unmuted, so she is unmuted.
Be sessioned.
There you go.
I'm back again. Yes, Mayor, I would like to add a goal of creating a really vibrant environment for staff and community to do their work. That, that's, that would be one of my, one of my goals to add.
And do the, does the, let's start with the motion maker. Does the motion maker accept that addition of a goal?
I do, Mayor.
And does the second?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
Thank you, Mayor. How do you measure creating a vibrant community for staff? In six months, we're gonna have to evaluate that. And how do we say she's done this?
Councilmember Gonzalez, you are still unmuted if you'd like to respond to that.
Um, well, there, there are, it is, it is a challenging thing, but I think it's an important thing because we have certainly taken some actions that I think have been rough on staff. And so I guess my goal is to make a better environment for staff in, in my, in my motion. I'm, I'm, I think, creating, creating, a second, let me, I guess we could do an anonymous survey of staff. That would probably be the, the best way to handle it.
So you're gonna have staff evaluate their boss? Got it? Okay.
Sure. That'd be fine. Are there any councilmembers that want to speak to that or to adding additional goals? Councilmember Elliott?
Yes, I have to concur with councilmember Rosengarden here. I don't know how you measure that. And I'm all for setting objectives, you know, but at the end of the day, six months from now, whatever the period is, there's gonna be a group of people that have to evaluate the performance. And I, I don't understand how you evaluate that. You know, in my experience, one of the most difficult things and the thing you cannot do is legislate culture. That has to be earned and, and a person has to walk the walk and talk the talk. So I don't know, and I don't know how you measure that, I guess. And I, I think that's, I don't wanna put words into councilmember Rosengarden, but I think that's what she's saying, that she is saying that. I concur. I don't know how you measure that one.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
That's exactly what I'm saying. How do you measure that? So when we are sitting here in the next six months and we have to do this evaluation with the mayor, and the answer was to have the staff evaluate their boss?
And I would, before y'all take action on that, if y'all were gonna add that to the part of the requirements of the third goal, I would ask that you, as a council, in open session, be very clear how you want that to be done. Because I'm not really sure how you do a blind request of that sort in an organization where you have different departments and where there are some people where, you know, she may be viewed as the head of the organization, but that doesn't mean, for example, patrol officers, they may have little to no actual interaction with her. So I would just ask that if you're going to do that, I'm okay with it, but that you be very clear how you want that done. Because it could have the opposite effect, where you're hoping to improve morale or open pathways for employees to feel safe or heard, you may actually do the opposite. You may create an environment that makes staff feel like they're being asked something that is unfair or where they feel there may be some retaliation based on something being anonymous, and then it ends up not being anonymous.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I will go ahead and, I think it's, it's an important goal to, to, to work on our community culture and our, and our work culture as well. And if people are uncomfortable of that, I'm going to, you know, I'll just, I'm gonna leave it at that. I think it's important. And I understand that, but, but I mean, the COVID crisis, right? I mean, there, there's a whole lot of things that you're gonna have to measure. And, and, and I don't know that it's that much more difficult than the others, but, you know, I'll, I'll remove my anonymous survey. How's that?
Councilmember Reitz?
Um, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you.
Mayor, if I, if I could address, I think councilmember Gonzalez's concern, I think, could be met with what I wanted to introduce when I got here, which was 360 evaluations, which are not only evaluating the employee, but the employee evaluating me specifically. What do you need to accomplish your goals and how can I help you achieve that? If, if that's all we can get out of that, I'm happy to ensure that we move to a 360 eval.
Councilmember Gonzalez, do you wanna speak to that?
No, Mayor, I'll, I, I, I think we, I wanna make sure that we actually get there. But it's, you know, it may be a process and we'll figure it out as we go along.
Councilmember Reitz, did you want to say something?
Yes, I do think the feed, a feedback system is an important part of an organization. And I think this 360 degree program could be very beneficial. It does give staff opportunities to say in a positive way what they need to get their job done. And I think that's very positive. And I don't really have any problem with getting that initiated. I think that's an outstanding idea.
So I have a suggestion for the motion maker and the second, if they're amenable to this. What if the third goal was that we, as part of her evaluation, ask that she implement a better evaluation process that would include a 360 and/or some other mechanism that captures the thoughts and input of the employees for, not just for Sylvia, but for their, whoever is their supervisor or evaluating employee?
I am fine with that.
Karen, I've lost you. I'm not sure if you're, yeah, you're still...
I'm here. I was just saying, so I have a lot of experience with evaluations. And 360 is a kind of an older type of evaluation, but I, I think the premise, the concept of that, and if we can incorporate that into the new, a new evaluation process, feedback loop from the bottom up versus the bottom down.
Do you have a different way if we were gonna try to make this a clear third goal that tries to also capture some of what councilmember Gonzalez is wanting, which is to ensure that staff, culture, morale?
So, I'd need to think about that. I don't know if I can come up with that as a goal that's very succinct, because there's a lot of components to culture and evaluations and...
What if we just kept the goal simple and said the third goal is to create a more comprehensive and updated evaluation process? And that that be one of her clear goals to get implemented in time for the annual evaluations for all the employees?
I like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Would the second, sorry, I muted you, wanted, because I was getting a little bit of feedback. Would you accept that as the second?
I will.
Okay. And so that gets us to the point that we have three goals set. And then I would also, so that as residents or others are listening to this, I, I would like it made clear on the record that doing a 90-day evaluation of the city administrator was something new. It was added to this city, we've only had two city administrators, but the first one, this was not part of his contract. It was added to Sylvia's. I think it's a great idea. The problem was we didn't create a process first. And so when we got to this mile marker and it was time to do it, there was no clear process for me or council members to follow. So rather than filling out our traditional form that has not been updated for many years, council has decided instead, they discussed their experiences with Sylvia, gave her feedback and constructive criticism. And I would absolutely encourage councilmembers, if there's something specific you want made known on the record, that you speak now, not later. But that the decision was made to instead give Sylvia very clear goals for her to work towards in the next six months. And that we would, as we just noted in this motion, have a much clearer process and an updated evaluation for which to measure her against when she gets to her year mark. And councilmembers, if there's any clarification to what I just said that you'd like to add, if you would please do it now so that it's on the record and connected to this agenda item. And we, before we take the vote, it is important that we get resident input. Are there any residents or anybody in the public who would like to speak to this item before we take action? Mark Wells? And then Terry, I see that you have your hand up too. So, oh, and if there's anybody else, please raise your hand. Mark, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, I'm questioning, and again, I guess a rhetorical question, did, I was wondering if we had the same, uh, six-month evaluation that we're, that we had for Colin, I mean, that we, that we're having for Sylvia, did we have the same for Collins? And, okay, all right. And my question is why? I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it, but I'm saying what, why, why the difference? But, and let's see. I don't think we should be, and, and I want council to realize, I don't believe we should be micromanaging the city administrator. But at the same time, I don't wanna see the disastrous laissez-faire that we had with our previous administrator, Collins, where he could just do whatever he wanted to carte blanche with minimal oversight. So I think, I think, uh, the, the oversight of the city administrator should be somewhere in the middle of those two extremes. So again, I don't wanna micromanage, I don't want the city administrator micromanaged. And I think she brings a lot of expertise and, and, and wherewithal to, to, to our city. But at the same time, I don't, I wouldn't wanna see a complete hands-off like we've had in the past. So if we can reach some sort of a balance, I, I think that would be optimal and I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Cowan?
Okay. Well, I'm coming back to you.
Terry, you have the floor.
Yes, hi, you have the floor. We can hear you.
Thank you. I want to thank councilmember Gonzalez and Reitz for speaking to these, the 360 feedback and derivatives thereof. When I was a CEO of an organization, I underwent these. Not only did I learn how to be a better CEO, I had important, it gave me important insights in how to operate more effectively with my employees. And it also gave them the feeling that they had, that they would listen to and they had an opportunity to say something. When it's done in a professional manner, you can take care of the disgruntled people who try to sabotage it, because that applies also to supervisors doing evaluations of employees. And when that's done in a professional manner, using standard forms, you can pick up on that. So thank you, councilmembers Gonzalez and Reitz. I think it's a great idea. It's part of a 21st century organization and I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional citizen comment? I don't see any hands raised. So last call for citizen comment before we take a vote. I see one more hand. Clayton, you have the floor. Clayton, did you want to speak to this comment before we take the vote?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you now.
For the city administrator, it seems like the net result is whether or not the residents are happy. So I'm wondering if there's any way to get citizen input?
Do you have additional, are you, do you have anything else you want to say? Or was that the end of your comments?
That was the end of my comment.
Do you have any additional resident input? Councilmembers, if you would please, when I call the vote, enter your vote in the chat. And if you can't, raise your hand so that I can unmute you to call in your vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, if you would please read the votes into the record as you get them.
Councilmember Reitz, aye. Councilmember Elliott, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This moves us to item number three, which is worded very long. It is the short version for three is to adopt the updated order related to COVID for Sunset Valley. Do we have a motion to approve? Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move to approve agenda item number three, amending the declaration of disaster issued on March 24th.
Councilmember Reitz?
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to this item? Councilmembers first? And if I don't see any councilmembers, and councilmember, thank you. Any councilmembers who wanna speak? Okay, and then I see one resident comment. Charles Goyette, you have the floor. Charles, you are self-muted. There you go.
Good evening. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
There's two items on this, on this ordinance I'd like to address. The first item is, there's no specific language that talks about whether or not masks are still required. I don't know if that, that seems important to me.
It is silent to that, which means it is not required.
Okay, will that be understood if I walk into a place like Home Depot, for example?
Yes, but here's the caveat that I would add to that. So if you do read the governor's report, it is pretty clear from the report that they're suggesting that people wear masks, but it is not a requirement. The other caveat would be a store in their own can also require it. So you could go into Home Depot and Home Depot itself could have a, a rule posted that says you may not enter without a mask.
Okay, so, so they could kick me out of the store, but I'm not gonna get fined out of the deal.
No, Sunset Valley does not, part of our, part of the Sunset Valley order is not a requirement that people wear masks.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. I need the clarification on that. And, and I, yeah, and I thought maybe that, by that being stated explicitly, it may be useful, but that's not an issue for me really. I got the explanation I need. The second item is a little, it may be considered by some, maybe most, maybe all, picky own. But I've done my homework. And the third whereas clause states that COVID-19 virus spreads, mainly spreads between people who are in close contact with one another through respiratory droplets produced with an infected person, when an infected person coughs or sneezes. All of my research has told me that that is not true. And, and I challenge anybody to say otherwise. And I'm talking about professional medical journal studies. There has never been a case where a virus has proved to be transmittable between people. So virus transmission between people is, is not proven, let alone the fact that a person can get a virus from, you know, sucking in someone else's droplet. I, I mean, I just think that this ordinance could stand without that piece of information. And I just feel that piece of information is incorrect. And that's just my little pushback and my little objection to this whole pandemic issue, which I find to be really, really objectionable. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the last comment that Charles made, certainly it wouldn't have any effect on Sylvia, the chief, or I in terms of what we need the order to do function-wise. Or for residents who are listening and might not understand the importance of this, I'll give you an example. So if you read in the order, you'll see, I can't remember which number, and it just, Sylvia just pulled it off, but it's the number where it, it clearly says all of our non-residential entities can be open. And so that is an example where I chose to word it that way because I wanted to be as clear as possible, which is to say if you're not a house, you can be open, but you do need to be following the guidelines handed down by the governor. But a very clear example that was brought to my attention, which is why I listed the Brody Homestead explicitly, which I haven't had a resident ask me why I chose to do that. So Dan Ross, who's the owner of the Brody Homestead, he called and said that he has a second special event center, which is in downtown Austin. And he said he's been really struggling because he doesn't sell a good and he doesn't sell a service that's clearly defined in other places and that he views himself somewhere in between.
Councilmembers, if you would please, when I call the vote, enter your vote in the chat, and if you can't, raise your hand so that I can unmute you to call in your vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, if you would please read the votes into the record as you get them.
Councilmember Reese, aye. Councilmember Ellen, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. This moves us to item number three, which is worded very long. It is the short version for three is to adopt the updated order related to COVID for Sunset Valley. Do we have a motion to approve? Councilmember Rosengarden?
I move to approve agenda item number three, amending the declaration of disaster issued on March 24th.
Councilmember Reese?
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to this item? Councilmembers first, and if I don't see any councilmembers, and councilmember, thank you. Any councilmembers who want to speak? Okay, and then I see one resident comment. Charles Goyette, you have the floor. Charles, you are self-muted. There you go.
Good evening, I'm sorry about that. There's two items on this ordinance I'd like to address. The first item is, there's no specific language that talks about whether or not masks are still required. I don't know if that, that seems important to me.
It is silent to that, which means it is not required.
Okay, will that be understood if I walk into a place like Home Depot, for example?
Yes, but here's the caveat that I would add to that. So if you do read the governor's report, it is pretty clear from the report that they're suggesting that people wear masks, but it is not a requirement. The other caveat would be a store in their own can also require it. So you could go into Home Depot, and Home Depot itself could have a rule posted that says you may not enter without a mask.
Okay, so they could kick me out of the store, but I'm not going to get fined out of the deal.
No, Sunset Valley does not, part of our, part of the Sunset Valley order is not a requirement that people wear masks.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. I need the clarification on that, and I, yeah, and I thought maybe that, by that being stated explicitly, it may be useful, but that's not an issue for me, really. I got the explanation I need. The second item is a little, it may be considered by some, maybe most, maybe all, picky own, but I've done my homework. And the third whereas clause states that COVID-19 virus spreads, mainly spreads between people who are in close contact with one another through respiratory droplets produced with an infected person, when an infected person coughs or sneezes. All of my research has told me that that is not true, and I challenge anybody to say otherwise, and I'm talking about professional medical journal studies. There has never been a case where a virus has proved to be transmittable between people. So virus transmission between people is not proven, let alone the fact that a person can get a virus from, you know, sucking in someone else's droplet. I mean, I just think that this ordinance could stand without that piece of information, and I just feel that piece of information is incorrect, and that's just my little pushback and my little objection to this whole pandemic issue, which I find to be really, really objectionable. Thank you.
Thank you. And to the last comment that Charles made, certainly it wouldn't have any effect on Sylvia, the chief, or I, in terms of what we need the order to do function-wise, or for residents who are listening and might not understand the importance of this, I'll give you an example. So if you read in the order, you'll see, I can't remember which number, and it just, Sylvia just pulled it off, but it's the number where it clearly says all of our non-residential entities can be open. And so that is an example where I chose to word it that way, because I wanted to be as clear as possible, which is to say, if you're not a house, you can be open, but you do need to be following the guidelines handed down by the governor. But a very clear example that was brought to my attention, which is why I listed the Brody Homestead explicitly, which I haven't had a resident ask me why I chose to do that. So Dan Ross, who's the owner of the Brody Homestead, he called and said that he has a second special event center, which is in downtown Austin, and he said he's been really struggling because he doesn't sell a good, and he doesn't sell a service that's clearly defined in other places, and that he views himself somewhere in between church and special events. He hosts mostly, most of his money made this time of year is through weddings, which he considers, you know, he certainly makes money off the special event, but it's also a religious service for the customer. So he said the problem he was having is that people were canceling, and part of how they were canceling and getting out of their contracts was by looking at the ordinances in different cities and saying, well, it's very clear from your ordinance that you're not allowed to be open. And so as we're evaluating the economic impact, I assure councilmembers and residents, there's a lot of facets that we don't understand yet about how this is going to affect our retail district, or even the legal issues that they will be dealing with now and also further down the road, because everybody's going to want to get paid, and many people are not going to want to pay for things. And so we tried to make this order as open as possible to allow our shopping center to operate with the trust that they would work under the governor's guidelines to do it safely, and with the trust that our police chief and our police department would help facilitate through community policing, as they always do, the ability to work with the retailers and work with residents and shoppers as they see things that they think don't appear to be safe, to allow our police department to help facilitate and manage that. And with that, Chief, I want to make sure if there's anything that we have misstated here before we approve it, that you speak up and correct and/or add. And I don't. See, Chief, there you are. Chief, is there anything you want to add, or where we've misstated something? Chief, I see that your mic is hot, but we can't hear you. I'm not sure if you're saying anything. Chief, I have, I'm going to leave your mic open in case you're able to break through, and I do see that there's one other resident comment. Terry, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's Terry again, Terry Cowan, 4500 Stern Lane. I think this is very well-written. I would not endorse changing any of it. It's well-thought-out. I think it's important to avoid the science arguments that would be involved in one of the requested changes. I respect Charles and his opinions, I have opinions too, but I think as it's written, it's meeting the needs and concerns of the city at this time, and I recommend that it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chief, I'm going to call out one more time, is there anything you want to add before we take a vote on this item? Councilmembers, all those in favor, say aye through your chat, please submit your vote, and then Sylvia, if you would please read the votes back as you get them.
Please recognize Councilmember Gonzalez. Oh, there she is on chat, never mind. Okay. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye. Councilmember Reese, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Ellen, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. That moves us to citizen comment, and my only request for all those that are in attendance to speak tonight, if you would please speak, only if you want to speak to an item that's not on the agenda, since we do have so many items this evening, and if you're here to speak to a specific item, if at all possible, if you would please stay in the meeting until we get to that item. Not a request, not a requirement, just a friendly request. Helen, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. I just, I would like to request that when motions are being repeated right before a vote, or actually, that would the motion be said right before a vote, before you do it, because on April the 7th, I was listening to a lot of discussion, I heard the motion at the first of the discussion, much, much discussion, and then before the vote happened, the motion wasn't said again, and I was confused by then as to what you were actually voting on. Ray Jean used to do that every single time, she would reread the motion, so everybody was very clear what they were voting on, and I would just appreciate if you would put that back into your meeting structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, Helen, I've gotten lots of requests that are not easy to meet, that one's easy. So yes, I think that's an easy one, all starting immediately, that's something I can do, and I feel your pain, that's the reason I have Sylvia read the votes in, which is not something we normally do, but I recognize that some of us, right now, I'm in front of a computer, but there are times when we're not in these virtual meetings, sometimes it gets hard to know who's speaking, and so yes, the more that we verbalize the specifics of stuff, the better. So yes, moving forward, I will make an effort to read the motion clearly, or to have the city secretary read the motion clearly, when it's a more complicated motion, before we take action. Do we have any other residents that want to speak to items that are not on tonight's agenda? Mark Wells, you have the floor? And it looks like you are self-muted.
Okay, can you hear me? Thank you, Mayor. Am I unmuted?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. The first issue, let's see, I'd like to, okay, now I'm going to scratch attorney off my list, because that's further down the list, isn't it? Okay. The first issue is going to be the drainage of my neighbor, my neighbor's property, specifically Ruth, and she's had this problem going on for quite some time, the drainage in her property. Matter of fact, whenever she tried to get, I guess when they're working on Jones Road, and she was trying to get a grate, and she approached, at the time, Ronson, who absolutely did nothing for her, didn't help her out a bit, and as a matter of fact, was pretty rude to her, but anyway, I just want to make sure that Ruth's drainage issue is handled, and I think I sent an email out on that a few weeks, maybe a week and a half ago, but I want to sure, I want to be sure that we stay on top of that, okay? As far as resolving her drainage issues, if we can, she's, you know, she's been having this for quite some time, and so every time it rains, it apparently floods in her garage and potentially floods in her house. So I want to be sure that we keep that on the front burner. And secondly, on Reese, just my two cents worth, I think the, I guess the addition there by the bridge, there's a little pig and a little goat there, I think it's wonderful. I was, I was walking by there the other day, and that pig, the little pig was wagging his tail, but I'm all in favor of people having livestock. I think it's, I think it goes back to our roots. I mean, I'm a relatively newcomer here, I've only been here 20 years, I know folks have been here longer than I have, but I think that speaks to, I don't know, kind of the way that our city was originally founded as an agricultural, as an agrarian community, centered around horses, and I heard that, and I know that by speaking with Ms. Vaughn. Anyway, my, at the time, next-door neighbor who named our city, City of Sunset Valley. But anyway, I just think that's a nice addition, and whoever has those pigs and goats, I hope they get more. And again, as long as it's not harming anybody or harming anybody else's property, hey, I'm all for it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I can't speak to the animals, except I think they also, there's a cow that's a friend over there with those two. But to your first item, that property, because Ruth had brought it to my attention, I believe, a week or close to that, before Sylvia started, so that was also on my radar as something that needed to close the loop. I have moved that as a pending agenda item on 6/2 that I'm sponsoring, and so what I am going to be looking for is for admin to give a clear presentation to council as to what the status is. So even if the status is, we don't have a status, or this is what we're doing, because I've, I know that Ruth has been waiting a long time, I know that it's a problem, and it also came up in the recent Public Works Committee, where they were ranking priority projects. So the follow-up, Mark, is that I am sponsoring an item on June 2nd's meeting, even if it's just to have presentation and update with no action.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and I'd appreciate if you would also keep me in the loop as well. I appreciate that.
Do we have any other people who would like to speak to items that are not on tonight's posted agenda? We are now at reports. For the mayor's dashboard, I would just direct residents to look at it as I'm trying to keep it updated. I have cleaned up my close-the-loop, and I've either closed things out completely or moved them into holding positions on future agenda items. So for anybody who wants to know what the mayor is looking to sponsor in the next two to three months, I'm, as transparent as I can be at this point, as to what I intend to sponsor between now and, I think, I posted items all the way through July 7th. Other than that, I would just let people know that we are trying to keep the retail status updated. I do have a few additions that the chief sent me today that I haven't posted on there yet, but that for councilmembers and residents to just realize, it is maybe more in flux now than it was when we made the closures, because even though people have the right to be open, many of them don't have enough business to justify being open, or they're struggling to figure out how to put proper safety protocols in place, and some of them are even opening, reclosing, opening again. So the chief is, the chief and the police officers are letting me know in as much of real time as possible what's going on, and we will keep that board updated. Certainly, if residents or councilmembers see something that's inaccurate, please just email either the chief, myself, or Sylvia, and we will update that board. And if we don't have any questions, I would ask councilmembers to let me know now. So for our next work session, currently, what we have slated for next Tuesday's work session is for the entire meeting to be a more formal rollout of the OpenGov tool, a presentation from Sylvia. She will be asking for questions from councilmembers, so if you have specific questions about the OpenGov financial tool that we unveiled on Saturday, if you would submit those questions, and she will include those in the presentation next Tuesday. Councilmembers, are there any other items that you would want to see on that work session? And then the next question would be, do we want to have a work session beyond that? Because we hadn't formally said whether we wanted to or not, so the next one would be 5/26. So I'm looking for council to formally tell me that they do want to have a work session on that date or not. Councilmember Medicus?
I'd like to keep that at least as a placeholder. From what I understand, we will have more accurate information on the sales tax revenue, not in time for the 12th meeting, but if we don't have an item on the 19th meeting, I think it would be important for us to review that information and have some discussion on the 26th.
Thank you, Councilmember Medicus. Well, as you can see, I've placed it there. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak? Councilmembers, I've heard from one. Is there anybody else who wants to support or offer a reason that they don't want to add that, which would be a non-regular meeting? Councilmember Gonzalez?
Mayor, I would support the assessment, and we can always pull it, but I think as a placeholder, I agree with Councilmember Medicus, we're going to have a whole lot of information when we get our first sales tax numbers, and I think we may want to be able to discuss that. And we're not happy to have a long meeting, but I think to be able to do it separately, if we desire and we don't get it done enough during the next meeting, or we have more breakout or whatever, it's good to have a placeholder, because it's an important moment.
Councilmember Rosengarden?
I agree. At any time a council member feels they need more work sessions, time to talk, just freely without motions and voting, I agree with it, anytime.
Great, then I will keep it there. And so you guys now all have been given notice that in the book of Sylvia and I, in terms of planning and preparing stuff, we are, I'm going to move the TBD and put it there, and then on the 19th, if you all want us to cancel that meeting, you'll need to let us know on the 19th. And so with that, I will allow Sylvia to take over and lead for the rest of the staff committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me open this in a new tab. I'm going to go through the administration report. Obviously, we are still in post-COVID, and continue to work with not only the council, but our retailers and our residents on everything that that impacts. We did do the soft OpenGov launch on Saturday, so I encourage folks, if they have not gone to the site, to please go into it, play with it. We're building every single day. Our new accountant, Susanna, and Ray Jean are working, you know, really hard, we're all trying to get in as much information as possible so that we can begin the budget process. The hot fund, we have had some discussion with our hotel, and we're going to need to have some very serious conversations, because he does, we will not be receiving a hot fund payment in this first quarter. He's already made that known to us, and is going to be seeking relief. Venue tax as well, that's also an item on the upcoming agenda items, and there's some information in there that we asked Doug to provide, that was distributed earlier this week to council, and so we'll be going through some of that. I will be meeting with the Budget and Finance Committee Chair and the council liaison this week to go through the budget builder within OpenGov, and then work through training with the committee and the council in advance of Tuesday's council meeting, so that we're all comfortable and can begin to navigate around the software. There are some new releases from the governor's call today. I know most of you are aware, he said salons and things can be open on the 8th with limited, and then other openings on the 18th. So we will probably be releasing another bulletin update with those important marks, either tonight or first thing tomorrow, depending on how soon the mayor and I can get on. And so with that, I will turn it over to Carolyn. Oh, I did, I did want to touch base on the pond. So you saw a lot of work happening in the last two weeks with the pond, and that was a contractual obligation on the part of the city to allow the contractor to attempt to make repairs. We have not seen significant improvement through the repairs, and in fact, some of the concerns about the environmental impact of the flock that was going to be added did come to fruition. So I will be sponsoring an item on the 19th to bring a full report to the council on what our next steps are expected to be, and in the meantime, I will be in touch with our current engineers and developing a plan of action for it, as well as in discussions with TCEQ on our possible avenues for resolution.
Sylvia, before you move on to the next department, you touched on, with the OpenGov release, Susanna Fliegel, who I know is on right now, she is our accountant in waiting, and so as many of you know, Ray Jean has announced her retirement, and I am proud of our city and our council for supporting us doing a very healthy transition. Sometimes departments and organizations, it just doesn't lend itself to doing that. In this situation, I've already seen the benefits to both Ray Jean, to Susanna, to Sylvia, to myself, and to the organization, and the OpenGov is a very, you know, front-facing, what you see as a product that was released early. It was a lot of work, it was a lot of hair pulling for everybody involved, and I am really, to say that I'm proud is almost, maybe sounds condescending, but Ray Jean and Sylvia, hats off to you guys, because it's, that's not an easy transition to take really old systems that didn't have technology or software connected to them, and to transform them as fast as you did with a new employee, and to watch the three of you work together as well as you did to get that done, I, it was very impressive for me to see that. And Sylvia, with that, I would like for you, if you can, very briefly, to highlight some of the skills and experience that Susanna brings to the position.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, and truly, it's been a pleasure to watch Ray Jean and Susanna be able to interact, and Ray Jean to hand the torch over, and Susanna to have sort of the inquisitive mind that she wants to learn, and really can absorb it like a sponge. She does bring with her experience from Travis County, so she is familiar She does bring with her experience from Travis County, so she is familiar with the public sector. She does have the same transparency goals and that was one of the things that really attracted us to her because Travis County has won multiple awards for their transparency in allowing you to root down all the way into the check register and even in some instances view check images. We are going to get to that particular level so that any resident who has any inclination or any question can delve into the information and then prepare perhaps a more comprehensive question to any one of the staff members and we're all equally informed. So it's been a pleasure in the short time she's been here. Regine has been more than receptive and really mama bearing this thing along. So I'm happy and it it really, it was a threefold effort to get it off the ground as fast as we were able to.
Thank you. And with that, what is there other additional staff reports that we need to go through?
Well, I see Councilmember Ella's hand up, so.
Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Ella, you're very bottom. You have the floor.
I just want to, yeah, I didn't realize what you were going to say. I want to say it looks great. Had a first look at it on Saturday. I feel like we we have a powerful tool here. I'm looking forward to more data being put in there, but already I can see the benefits of it. So I want to thank the entire team for getting that up in in a relatively short time. It must have been hard work and I really want to thank you. The second thing is on the pond. I also want to thank Mr. Calmona again for raising the issue, this time about the wildlife and the concern of us losing wildlife that may or may not be linked to the activity in terms of correctness. I think that is concerning. And I know Sylvia, you've addressed that and but I think we need to be aware of that. And also, I assume, and I think I know you're going to say yes to this, that we are documenting the whole process here and working with our engineer and to verify that the tests are not going well and that we'll build in the case should we seek further action, whatever that may be.
Yes, absolutely. Our engineer Travis is on the line and is is doing a daily update, checking the the levels, checking how the testing is going. And and yes, if you recall, I think one of the concerns about the flock was its impact to wildlife. And sure enough, we did see that impact. Thankfully, not as catastrophic as it could have potentially been because staff was on it and hats off to Carolyn, who, you know, is the biologist on the team. But it did have an impact nonetheless. So we are documenting everything. And again, on the 19th, I will, I'll have a more comprehensive report to the council and the community as to what we think is a potential next step and and perhaps some potential resolution to get us, you know, to get us on the right track again.
Thank you. And Carolyn and or chief, do either of you want to summarize anything for us for Public Works or Public Safety PD?
I have the Public Works report up. So Carolyn, I don't know if you're self muted or.
Yeah, I can go ahead and go. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Public Works has been pretty busy. We've been doing a lot of, there's been some trees from recent storms that were down. There've been a couple small water leaks we've repaired. Just different things like that, just trying to keep the streets and streets and trails safe and the water system good and healthy. And if anybody has any questions at the end of all the reports, we'll be happy to answer those.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, you are self muted. There you go.
Hi Carolyn, if you go to the completed items and you go one, two, three, four, five, six lines down and it says natural waterways maintenance weed eat, Dunston Valley Tributary. Please tell me that's a type.
No, we go through and we kind of weed eat a little bit so that we can get in there and we get remove some debris and stuff from those creeks and that tributary right there.
Oh, you meant that? Usually you would say weed whack, but weed.
Yeah, we it says weed eat, sorry.
Okay.
Same thing.
And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Carter?
So Chief Carter says he doesn't know what's going on with his microphone. We can't hear him. He's got his hand raised, though.
He has this and it shows on my side that he has a hot mic and then it looks like he disappeared. Let me see if I can find him again.
He's got a hot mic.
Yeah.
Um, so so I'll cover for chief until he he can come in. Obviously, the being at home is affecting our criminals are getting struck crazy. And so we have had an uptick in the vehicle burglaries and things. We have identified a suspect. The suspect is in jail already on different charges. And so we're going to deal with that as we're able to. And then the police department has also increased its visibility in neighborhoods during the overnight hours to try to curtail some of that. And then the his ongoing projects with working through the Public Safety Committee is the mobile data computers for repair and replacement. Those are the ones that are in the cars. That's those are important for them to get repaired because that's their method of communication. And then we're still talking about the portable pole cameras in the in the commercial areas, but that project's been placed on hold at this time.
Thank you. And Councilmember Rosen Garden, I may have just forgotten to take your hand down before. Is there something that you wanted to add?
That's exactly what happened. You forgot to take my hand down.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak during the staff and committee reports? And then for any of the staff members, are there any actual committee updates that need to be highlighted that weren't highlighted either through agenda items or through your departmental comments this evening?
The Planning and Environmental Committee will meet this week. They are going to go through the same exercise that the Public Works Committee went through in terms of identifying projects and prioritizing them. And as we go into the budget, one of the things to take into account is one, offloading from the general fund. And two, also, if we're going to add projects back, what impact does that have to staff as we begin to build the base budget?
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from council members or residents related to the staff reports? Councilmembers, we are now at item number six, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Raise your hand if you want to make a motion. If not, I'll move on to the next item. Councilmember Rosen Garden? Let's try that again.
I moved to I moved to approve the minutes from April 21st and April 28th with corrections, I believe, that were sent by Councilmember Medicus.
We have a motion to approve item number seven with the edits that were submitted by Councilmember Medicus. Councilmember Medicus, you are you a second?
Yes.
We have a second. And then is there anything you want to say? Since your name was brought into that motion, is that accurate, what Councilmember Rosen Garden said?
Yes, I sent my corrections to Regine.
Do we have any additional council comments? Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Mayor, I also sent a correction in about the insufficiency of notice notice, the notice of insufficiency that was.
I did get that and that that well, no. So I didn't. I don't see how that fits onto this item. But let's if I think that that would fit into our admin report. And so this is a question for Regine. And so Regine, I think what we want to make sure is that part of the adoption of the minutes for the April 7th meeting and for the April 14th meeting, both of those included an addendum. For April 7th, it was an addendum that included all of the resident comments that were submitted to be read into the record for that evening. And for April 14th, it was two separate defined items. The first were comments submitted by residents for the April 14th meeting, similar to April 7th. The second was a email that was submitted by Councilmember Gonzalez with both Councilmember Gonzalez and Councilmember Medicus signing that email for insufficiency of notice. And so all of those are supposed to be included. One item for the 7th, two items for the 14th as an addendum. I don't know how long when we pass minutes, how long it takes for you to post that. That's actually not something I've ever paid attention to. And then the second would be, how are you going to reflect those addendums so that it's clear that those things were included in the minutes for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So Matthew and I worked on that today and I believe both, everything is posted now with the minutes on the in the minute section. And I had just included in the minutes as saying the addendum is attached to these minutes and or there are addendums attached to these minutes. And so I I believe everything is up there now as of this afternoon.
And so Councilmember Gonzalez, it's have you, I would imagine you just haven't had a chance to look to see if it's sufficient.
Well, in the minutes, it says that what I talked about was just resident comments. And I also talked about the notice of insufficiency and I just would like that recorded in the minutes because it only has one of the items and not two. And I'd like to have them both in. That's it. That's my, I'd like I'd like that added added. And that's fine. As long as it's in there.
And Regine, I don't, at this point, I don't know what Councilmember Gonzalez is referring to because I believe that our minutes didn't reflect anything subjective and that they just listed the motion and the action.
That's correct. And and the April 7th meeting is the one that the notice of efficiency was posted on because that's the meeting that it was was tied to. But there's, there's. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. If that's if it's there, that's good.
Yeah. And then the April 14th has all of the emails where people had written in where they wanted it to be part of the record. All of those are now attached as an addendum also. And then I also added to the 7th meeting on the top that the recording started late and it and it began at the citizen comments.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Please submit your vote via chat. Sylvia, please read the votes back once you receive them.
Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Reed, aye. Councilmember Ella, aye. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye.
Thank you. That was a motion to approve the minutes from April 21st and April 28th. Motion passes unanimously. We are now at item number eight. Presentation and selection of law firm attorney to serve as city attorney pursuant to RFQ for legal services approved for issuance on January 7th. And Sylvia, I will let you take the lead on summarizing us on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive three applications for city attorney. One was non-responsive as it came beyond the deadline date. We originally interviewed the firms and we asked these four questions. Your communication style, your experience with complex ordinance development, et cetera, et cetera. Because there was only two firms, we chose to bring both firms back to the council. Each of you submitted a set of questions and they are attached in your background. Council was asked to review and and ask any further questions that they wanted to in advance of the meeting. We've not gotten anything additional from the council and so I would open it up to the council. Both firms are present and in the audience at this time. So Mayor, depending on how you want to handle the the questions from the council to the firms, I'm I'm happy to entertain that.
Yes, the one thing I would add is that, again, because we only had two, rather than interviewing and trying to select a choice, I chose a very passive role. So I didn't add questions to Sylvia's questions. The only thing that I added to the process was that they receive copies of the last two memos that Doug had written, not because of anything particular in those memos, just so that they could see two examples of what we most commonly in my practice request, which are short memorandums that provide backup information to council members as they prepare agenda items. And then I asked that they look at two previous council meetings to listen to the minutes so that they could sort of get a feel for the culture of how our council debates issues, specifically where we're asking for input from Doug. Other than that, I stuck to Sylvia's questions. Matt was also on that call, so we made sure to include a third staff member. I mean, a third person, another staff member. And then I would also point out that there is an extensive RFQ that hopefully council members, you also reviewed the RFQ and the responses that each firm submitted to that. I did see some of the questions that were submitted by residents on our feedback form. And many of those are things that were covered in the initial RFQ. Some of them are conflict questions and questions related to the firm's contact with city employees or council members.
Oh, Mayor, do you want to address that on the record?
The part that applies to you, I think it's will actually maybe for both of us. So I don't have any connection to any of the three firms, including the two that are in front of you this evening. And yes, Sylvia, I think it would be good for you to address that on the record as well.
Okay, there was a question from a prior council member, Karud, on the OpenGov platform, specifically to Denton Navarro in 2018, working with the City of Aransas Pass on their HR policy. I had already left the City of Aransas Pass. I left in 2017, so I did not work with them on that. There was also some question about them working with the City of Corpus Christi in 2016. I didn't rejoin the City of Corpus Christi until 2017, so I didn't work on them with that. There was also a question with the Knight Law Firm, Roxy Stevens being Assistant City Attorney. I did not work with Roxy. My my interaction with Roxy was she worked with the city manager directly because she was the city's litigator and really in charge of police and fire negotiations. And my prior role with the City of Corpus Christi was development services and I had a different city attorney assigned. There was a Department of Attorneys and Stevens was one of those attorneys. So that is my interaction with all of the attorneys. And I will note that it is not unusual for attorneys to work through TML. And so we're going to all have touched in some way, shape or form. But as far as I'm concerned, there is no conflict of interest.
So the what I would like to do next is to allow council members to ask any additional questions or to highlight anything that they think is important for the record. And then to get questions from residents if they have not already been answered in any of the information that council has. We do need to, my, the the hope tonight would be that you select a firm. And I don't see anybody's hand raised. And so at any point during this, we can also entertain a motion, which would be a motion to select either of the firms. There's no requirement that you re-interview them during this agenda item. Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, yes, sorry. We can hear you.
Sorry, you you had gone away for a while. The the references were all called and by by y'all and during the process?
I'm going to Sylvia, I want you to answer that question and I want to make sure it's very clear. The only thing that I participated in was sitting in on the phone interview with each firm. So Sylvia, you would answer that. But to be clear, those are the that is the only participation that I've had in this process up to this point.
Yes, ma'am. And the firms have also submitted in their packets what are equivalent to letters of recommendation from current and prior and existing clients.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions that you need answered? Councilmember Ella?
Yes, it's just a comment and I'm happy to go through and share my opinions of either one. I think both of them submitted good proposals here. I think what's important here is is important to this to get the feedback from council. I don't want to forget that I'm not going to be interacting with the law firm to the extent that the city administrator is and yourself, Mayor. So I would encourage the two of you, you know, to turn in or, you know, who is, who do you think you can best form a relationship with? And so I think that's important to take into consideration because you two will be in particular the city administrator. because you two will be, in particular, the city administrator, I would imagine, will be the one that's going to be interacting within to the, to a far greater degree than what I think a council member's will. What I'm looking for as a council member is briefing packages in, in, during the council meetings. I'm sure the extent of the relationship beyond that is much more involved at the city administrator and the mayor, the mayor level. So I just want to make that point.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I will say my frustration was that we didn't get the information about their fees until yesterday. Would have been nice to have that with the full packet. So having to do all this last minute extra reading and extra detail just before one day of our meeting, that was frustrating. And it would be helpful if Denton Navarro, they set up their presentation on their fees differently than Knight Law Firm. Sometimes it's, it's, everybody has their unique way and style of showing things, but it's hard to interpret exactly equal to equal, apples to apples. So I would ask on Navarro, what is your retainer fee?
And I'm not sure which of you would like to speak to that question, so please, thank you. Mr. Zach, you have the floor.
Thank you. This is Charlie Zach with Denton Navarro. We don't require retainer fees. What we do is we perform work on an hourly basis as the city needs it, billing on the 10th of an hour and then submit our bill at the end of the month after all the work has been completed and, and request that our bills be paid within 30 days after submission. So we don't actually require or request that any of our clients submit us dollars as a retainer that we keep in a trust fund on a day out.
Okay, what are your hourly rates? When we're dealing with somebody calling you and you're dealing with city administrator, hourly rates?
It's going to depend on who they talk to. If they talk to a shareholder, it's going to be $210 an hour. If it's a senior associate, it's $195 an hour. If it's an associate, it's $185 an hour. And a paralegal is $95 an hour.
What are your preparation litigation fees?
For, we charge the same for litigation, whether it's pre-trial or trial. Shareholder Lowell Denton, who has 35 years of experience in litigation and has actually argued before the, assisted in arguments before the United States Supreme Court, he bills 365 an hour. All other partners and shareholders are $300 an hour. Senior associates are 265 and associates are $245 an hour for direct hire litigation. We wouldn't be hired as your counsel for anything covered by the risk pool. The risk pool chooses not to hire the law firm, who is also the city attorney, to represent them in risk pool covered litigation.
What is your fee for a litigation courtroom?
Same as, our, our, our fee is the same whether it's pre-litigation or litigation.
So what the difference is one is preparation and one is being in the courtroom. And you're saying it's 365, 300 or 265? Is that correct?
That's correct. If it's Lowell Denton, it's 365. If it's a shareholder, it's 300. And if it's a senior associate, it's 265 or an associate, it's 245. Typically, our shareholders on direct hire litigation are supervising the work of a senior associate or an associate. So most and the bulk of the work is going to be done either by an associate or a senior associate for litigation. And also, of course, those are our fees. You're, of course, if you hire us as city attorney, I'm not sure what your ordinance says, but of course, you know, you're free to hire whoever you want as litigation counsel if, if you get, if you get sued on an issue that is not covered by the risk pool.
Okay, nice. Thank you. Those are my, that was my question.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosen Garden. Councilmembers, do we have any additional questions for either of the firms? And Councilmember Gonzalez, I apologize if I'm incorrect. I'm unmuting you because I see your hand up, but I'm not certain if you had a new question.
I'm going to go ahead and move that we hire the Knight Law Firm and that way we can open it up for discussion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I will second that.
It's now open for discussion and so I'll look for new hands to come up. Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, in general, this is a question for the city administrator. How many hours do we normally use the city attorney for per month?
That depends. It depends on the complexity of the agenda item. Here recently, he's been asked to review all of the council agendas. You know, I, I would probably say five to eight hours a week at a minimum. But Doug is on, he can, he can chime in if you'd like to verify that.
Doug, would you, there you go. I found you. Doug, is there anything you'd like to add to Councilmember Reitz's question? Hold on. Doug, you're in the room twice. Let me unmute the second one. There, I can hear you now. Yep.
Sylvia probably got it about right. It does vary, but between 15 and 25 hours a month, maybe. Sounds about right.
Thank you, Doug. I would, just my opinion and observation, I think that there is a lot that Doug, in part because he and his firm have represented the city for so long, there's things that we either don't get charged for just because, not for any nefarious reason, that I just think council and the community needs to be prepared that whoever you hire, you should at least be prepared that there will be more hours for two reasons. One, if they're doing their job above board, they should be charging us for everything because the charge is what creates the record that the public gets to see. And two, as we transition, I would imagine that both firms, there will be a, a process where they're trying to learn and acquire and assess things, either to make recommendations where things are, they think are legally insufficient or just as they're trying to acquire enough knowledge to be able to participate in our meeting. So I think we will experience that with either one of the firms. Councilmember Ellitt?
Thank you. So I'm, I'm just doing some rough numbers in my head in terms of, you know, cost to the city, in terms of average hours billed. And I, I'm looking, that is a difference, but I, I, I think it's not that significant is what I'm holding in my head. I'd like to make a comment on how I, I went about this. I looked at every, both firms' response to all of the questions that there were, that were laid out in front of them. And I thought, by and large, they were pretty comparable. And then I also, then having seen that zoomed in on the questions that I had raised. And I particularly liked the response to two of the questions I raised, which was, how do you prepare for a council meeting, number one, and an example of a legal brief? And I, I actually liked the response back from Denton, Denton rather, much, much better. And I draw my conclusion from the fact that the brief I saw come in back from Denton actually had a conclusion in there. And one of the things I, I want to, as a council member is, I really not, of, of course, I want to listen to what the legal legality is of something, but I'm not a lawyer and I don't pretend to be a lawyer. And I want someone to both say, and here's a conclusion. And that is important to me and I like the way they handled that. I also like the way, how they set about, and I think it was a very well thought way in which they prepare for a council meeting. And I think that's essential to us, that we are well prepared for a council meetings. And we don't waste superfluous time on issues that we don't need to waste our time on. So my vote would be, based on that, I think both of them submitted very good proposals. My, my vote would be on Denton.
First, have I acknowledged Mayor?
Sorry, yes. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Okay, so just to make sure that I understand, Scanlon, Buckle and Young is not putting their name in the hat. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, I agree with Councilmember Ellitt. Both of them are qualified. Both of them would do a great job. Let's see, I had a question. And it escapes me at this moment. Go ahead and take someone else until I get back.
We'll, we'll do Councilmember Rosengarden. Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor. It looks like yourself muted.
Thank you. When I was talking to TML, which I have done a lot of lately, the, they, they did make the suggestion that we, we consider getting an attorney, you know, that, that charges us more by the month and so that people would be more inclined to, to talk to the attorney when they needed to. So I, I asked that in, in case people are willing to, to do a monthly amount and if, if they've done that with any of their other clients. And I, I'd be interested to know what that is because I, I just saw the amounts today, like an hour before. I don't know why I got it so much later than Councilmember Rosen Garden. But anyway, that is, that was a question that, that I think bears asking is if they sort of do X number of hours for a monthly fee or thereabouts.
I believe the Knight firm provided that in the pricing. And, and to address the pricing is, from a purchasing and a scoring perspective for professional organizations or RFQs qualifications, the, the first thing we do is, one, did it even meet all of the criteria? So it's a very large filter in the beginning. Did it meet the criteria? Was it turning on time? Did they, were they responsive to the pieces that were required in the RFQ? The second piece to that is some kind of either test interview or something that narrows the filter even further. And price is something that is discussed at the very end. We only just opened price recently. Councilmember Reitz, I believe, asked that question. And so when we opened the price, Matt is distributed that to the rest of the council all at the same time. So that's the rationale for the filters on how we get to the point we are tonight. It was only two firms and so the filters, you know, worked the way they should have and both are presented. The Knight firm did provide a base hourly, well, I guess it's called a monthly retainer. They gave us a price for two council meetings and 15 hours worth of work a month. And their, I believe their fees are comparable to what our Scanlon, Buckle and Young fees are.
Councilmember Gonzalez, can I ask a question for qualification or just clarification? When you say you spoke to TML, are you suggesting that there are firms that do governmental city work on a price fix per month?
No, they say, when I was speaking to TML, they said, yeah, that was what TML said. They said that some people, some smaller cities especially, because of price concerns, had firms that were on sort of more monthly retainers so that people weren't so worried about contacting the attorney. And that was just something that the attorney there that I was speaking with said in passing. So I pass it on and I, and I hope I accurately represented what they said. But that's, that was my understanding of the conversation.
So I would welcome either of the firms chiming in on this. My understanding is that that wouldn't be a sound practice for a law firm because it's not good. It's sort of frowned upon by the governing laws for attorneys, which is we, attorneys should be paid for the hours that they work and that that could create a false perception of what is being paid for and what service is being provided. I would imagine that maybe the caveat to that is that cities that have that type of an arrangement, there's still something that says, once you reach that mark, there's then some sort of notice and council, mayor, city administrator, somebody's allowed to exceed that monthly cap, but that the attorneys are still charging an hourly amount. Mr. Zach?
Yeah, I, I don't mind, you know, giving my input on that. I've been, I've been practicing private practice for cities since 2006. I also have sort of the same unique position that Roxanne had, which is I was in-house counsel as an employee for five years with the city of New Braunfels as, as the city attorney. So I had experience dealing with these issues, both as a lawyer in-house hiring outside counsel and now, of course, as outside counsel since 2006. It's been my experience that when we do a flat, because we did, we did try to do that in the past. And it's been my experience, if we just do a flat monthly fee, one of two things happens. Either the city ends up not calling us for an amount of time that then results in our hourly fee being some exorbitant amount of hourly fee because you never utilize the service or you don't utilize it as much. Or it gets overutilized and we end up with a hourly fee. It's, you know, somewhere in the $40 to $50 range, which is, it's just, that's impossible for us to maintain from a business, excuse me, from a business standpoint. We have, on the other hand, negotiated fee arrangements for attendance at council meetings where we will attend council meetings for a length of time at a set rate so that, so that council has a good feel from a budgetary standpoint what it's going to cost for attendance at council meetings. We have negotiated that in the past with other, other clients. But it is accurate to state that a flat fee for monthly services fixed, sort of fixed pricing usually ends up not being fair for one of the parties and it usually doesn't work out over the, over the long term. That's been my experience since I've started doing this, which is why, you know, we're open to negotiating any fee that, that, that a city might want to try to enter into if it works for the city and it works for us. But we have found in, in the 30 years that we've been doing this since 1990 that we, we provide a fair rate. We provide the services in a way that meets your budgetary requirements because we pay attention to your budget and we bill you for the services that we provide. And that is the, seems from our experience has been, is, is the fairest way to accomplish the goal.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I wanted to correct the statement I said earlier. I said that we received information on the fees yesterday. It was 158 today, it seemed like yesterday. I had enough time to review it all, but I wish I wouldn't have had to feel rushed. And I want to go ahead and call the question.
And Councilmember Rosen Garden, we have not asked for input from residents. Are you wanting to call the question before we do that?
I'm sorry, I will wait.
Okay. Do we have any input or questions from residents? Or the, the general public, not just residents? Mark, you have the floor?
Thank you. When, let's see. The RFQ packets that you received, you received two of them, correct?
That's correct. We received three, actually, but one was non-responsive.
Okay. When would those be, or, yeah, when can those be, be made available for review? The, the, those, those two packets that we're considering to the, to the, to the public?
They are included in the, in the backup information here. The, their, their cover letter, as well as the questions the council responded to. And I believe all of the backup is also available on the website. So this particular packet itself is 155 pages. So it's all here, Mark. It's, every single bit of information is here.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mayor, you have one of the applicants.
Alfonso, you have the floor? And Alfonso, we show that we can hear you. Is there a comment that you wanted to make? Roxana Stevens, and if you would let Roxanna Stevens, and if you would let people know that you're representing one of the applicants this evening.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Roxanna Stevens, thank you. And I just wanted to make a comment. I'm representing the Knight Law Firm. I'm one of the attorneys that would be part of the, or the proposed attorney that would be meeting or attending city council meetings and providing services for the firm. I just want to make a comment because the way that we structured our fee structure was to take into consideration the practicality of providing legal services to a city, such as yourselves, of your size, and taking into consideration the budget and the fact that you have to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. But yet you will need sound legal advice with that. So we structured our monthly retainer to include attendance at two city council meetings per month, plus 15 additional hours per month. And as you heard the former city attorney, the normal hours that attorney services are required ranges from about 15 to 25 hours per month. So we thought a lot about this retainer because we wanted to give you, number one, peace of mind that we could stay within budget while providing the city with the legal services it needs. Secondly, providing the city with legal counsel that they know they can pick up and call the phone and say, hey, we need to set a meeting. Part of that is, you know, and part of the discussion that always has to be had is going to be the legal services and the budget and what the costs are so far. You know, it should be an ongoing discussion and an ongoing progress report. In addition to that, we have also reviewed the codification of the city attorney position for the city of Sunset Valley. And one of the things that we understand that the city and the city council need are, number one, what are the assignments or the upcoming legal issues that we will need legal advice for? What are the assignments? How long do we think they might take? And approval of moving forward. And in our fee structure, we give you the monthly retainer, but we also discuss that we would meet and make the mayor and the city council and the city administrator aware of when and if we have to go above and beyond what is provided by the retainer. And before those services are initiated, that would have to be approved. So we're cognizant of that, and I just wanted to make that comment because, you know, we want to serve the best interest of the city, and we believe that we were able to come up with a fair rate structure for the city and for our firm. Thank you.
Alfonso, do you want to try?
Yeah.
Okay, we can hear you.
Okay. Alfonso Carmona, 1038 Sunflower. And when I hear Mayor Dan, the attorney that we have, and he was using 25 hours per month, 15 to 25. So we are looking around $50,000 per year for attorney expenditures. But even now, we will have a new attorneys. As you mentioned, they have to be familiar and they need to spend a little more time. So as a city as small as we have, and we are looking at the budget, do you think then with the new attorneys, we will be saving money? Or in reality, what will be our accomplish? Will it be more efficient, attorneys? How they will help us? Because I bet then we will spend over $50,000. In some cities, they are so, so good and we have a lot of problems, they take over 100, 200. And I was in one city that was over $600,000 per year. So I try to say that because I think that we need to know where we are going, and that is the business. But again, we need to be very careful because if we try to do things that they are the best for the citizens and the best for the city, sometimes not necessarily that was working because we have the bids, over $10,000. We need to have contracts. We have to make bids. Now, we need to have people, then they are coming. But not necessarily they know how is the city. And so many problems that they will take time. And in the way that sometimes if we are not sensitive to the community, we can create more problems. And the staff has to be sensitive because if no, we will spend much, much more money. So that is my question, is not my question, is my observation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfonso. And do we have additional residents who have not spoken yet who would like to speak? Councilmember Rosengarden, did you want to call the question again? Or do you have something else that you'd like to say?
I will call the question.
Councilmember Gonzalez, did you want to say something before I call for the vote?
Once a call to question is done, it must, all conversation must stop, and a vote on call to question must be made first.
Councilmembers, all those in favor, say aye. Those against, say nay. And please submit your votes via the chat. And Sylvia, if you would please read them back. Thank you.
So the motion to appoint the Knight Law Firm. Karen Medicus, yes. Phil Elliott, nay. Rosengarden, yes. Reitz, yes. Gonzalez, yes.
But what we're voting on is called a question. That's the first thing we're voting on, and then we have to take the vote.
Sorry. So let me read those again. Councilmember Elliott, no. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez, yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. We are now voting on the main motion, which is selection of the Knight Law Firm as the new city attorney for the city of Sunset Valley. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And submit your vote via chat.
Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Elliott, nay. Councilmember Reitz, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Rosengarden, aye.
Motion passes four to one. That moves us to our next item, which is item number nine. Presentation and selection of engineering firm and engineer to serve as city engineer pursuant to RFQ for engineering services approved for issuance on January 7th. Sylvia, if you would walk us through what we need to take action on this item.
Yes. Mayor and council, similar to the attorney RFQ. RFQ was posted. We had several firms submit. There was one firm who was also non-responsive. So there was a total of six firms that submitted. We went through the process of interviews. The interview panel consisted of myself, Carolyn Meredith, the liaison to the Public Works Committee, which was Councilmember Gonzalez, and the chair of the Public Works Committee, Randy McComel. So the ranking that you see has our current firm, Miller Gray, ranking as number one with the highest score. Engineering is a little bit different than city attorney in that we will not discuss price. That is determined after the selection process. So I'm open to any questions.
Councilmember Medicus?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation and select and appoint Miller Gray as the city's engineering firm for a period of three to five years.
Councilmember Reitz?
I will second.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments or input from council members? One more call for that. Are there any additional comments or questions from council members? Any comments or questions from any of the public on this item? Sylvia, is there anything that you would suggest that we add to the motion before we take the vote?
We will be discussing cost as we prepare either a three-year or a five-year agreement.
And so we will now be taking action on the selection of a engineering firm to serve as the city engineer for the city of Sunset Valley. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And submit your vote via chat. Sylvia, if you would please read the vote back to us.
Councilmember Medicus, yes. Councilmember Reitz, yes. Councilmember Rosengarden, yes. Councilmember Elliott, yes. Councilmember Gonzalez? We're awaiting your vote. Councilmember Gonzalez has her hand raised. Melissa Gonzalez, yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. This takes us to item number 10. Presentation and discussion of the many and various financial figures, processes, and rationale presented for the freezing of staff positions and the reduction in force actions. Clarification about why they were done before essential services were decided or actual budgets warranted the cuts. This is Councilmember Gonzalez's item. And so I will turn the floor over to Councilmember Gonzalez to present.
Mayor, you sure you don't want to take a break first?
That's completely up to council. So yes, if you'd like to take a 10-minute break, we can do that.
Let's take a break just because it's a lot to dump on people. So let's give it a moment.
Okay, so we are taking a break at 7:58. We will resume at 8:10. Thanks. Sylvia, are you and Rayjean ready for me to begin?
Yes, ma'am.
Great, thank you. We are calling back to session regular city council meeting for the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, May 5th. It is 8:10 p.m. We are resuming the meeting at the beginning of item number 11. Consider alternate, sorry, item number 10. Presentation and discussion of the many and various financial figures, processes, and rationale presented for the freezing of staff positions and the reduction in force actions, clarification about why they were done before essential services were decided or actual budgets warranted the cuts. And this item was sponsored by Councilmember Gonzalez, and she wanted to lead this item without support from myself or Doug or city administrator. So I'm going to allow her to take the floor and lead it. And then at any point, if councilmembers have questions, please raise your hands. And then Councilmember Gonzalez, if you'll give me the cue when you're done, or whatever other cue you want for either public input or council input. And with that, Councilmember Gonzalez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank everybody because I know that everybody is working really hard. I appreciate the mayor's hard work. I appreciate Sylvia's hard work. I appreciate all the other councilmembers who I know are putting in a lot of hours. And I appreciate all the residents who've been involved. So I just want to acknowledge that as we move forward here. One of the other things that I want to acknowledge is that there have been some differences of opinion about how we proceeded and different people's experiences about that. And that's what this agenda speaks to. But really, what I want to speak to at the bottom of this is how do we move forward together? Because that's really what's important here. And I also want to be talking about the problems of this pandemic. And the two things that are significant about this pandemic that we're preparing for is that we have less money and less people. Those are the two things. If we talk about are we preparing for a flood, we have a certain amount of things we do. If we talk about if we're preparing for a fire, we have a certain amount of things that we do. And this time, we're preparing for a pandemic. And so it's a thing that just sort of exists in the air, but there are really hardcore things that we prepare for. And less money and less people are the two things that we're needing to deal with. And it's all unknown. We don't know how much less money we're going to have. We don't know how few people. It's estimated 20% to 40% less people. We're about to open up the state, and they're predicting on one of the things that I read today that, you know, June 1st, they're doubling the amount of people who might be dying as things open up. That was a major thing I just looked at before we started this. So we have dealt with, I think, very effectively the less money portion of this. We figured out our essential services and city administrator, if I think you're working the screen, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the brochure that I sent at the end of the day, which should be at the very bottom of this data. And just the page right before that last one. Thank you so much. There we go. Okay. And maybe people can blow it up a little bit. But this is a good background for the continuity of operations. And it talks about, you know, this is a federal one, but it's not any different. Let's go back down there. Thank you. It's not any different than at the heart of it, what our plan would be. And so if you look at these 10 items that they create here, the first one is essential functions. And the essential functions are what we identified and what we paid for. So yay us, yay finance, yay council, yay all the people who worked hard on doing that. We are now in a situation where if we have 80% loss of revenue, we believe we're in a surplus situation according to the numbers that we had. So yay. That's 50% of what we really know is coming at us. Now, the other 50% is the less people. And some of us don't really have concerns about the way that we proceeded. And I'm going to set that aside for now. I'm going to address that. But I want to set that aside for now for purposes of talking about how we move forward together. The next things are really all about, a lot of them are a lot about people, the orders of succession. You know, if we lose people, how do we make decisions? How do people step up? So that's really important as we deal with this potential loss of anybody because everybody is vulnerable. The delegations of authority, these are important things to do before they happen. That's what makes them more legal. The continuity of the facilities is probably less of an issue here. We got a lot of room, and we probably don't have to move. And there's lots of room for people to spread out. So that's another good thing. It's a gift. And communications, we need to probably pay a little more attention to that and the vital records, and we need people to do that. But then the next one, again, human capital, very, very important. The tests, the training and exercises coming next, that's the cross-training that we need to be doing with our people because we, again, are looking at 20% to 40% reductions in staff. The devolution of control and direction, those are our agreements that we need to get in place, but also people-focused things. And then the reconstitution, which is things that Councilmember Medicas has been trying to focus on, which has been really wonderful. But how do we hit the ground running when this all happens? And all of these things are people-specific. And so that's why I really wanted to pull this up here. Because, you know, in our zeal to deal with the first issue, perhaps we have compromised the second issue, and we really need to pay attention to that. So this is straight out of FEMA. This is what everybody in the country is dealing with. This is what all our neighbors are doing. This is who we're going to compete with for people when people come back. And when we talk about using temps, these are the same people who we're competing with when we're talking about using temps. And these are the same people who are trying to, who might try to make agreements but don't even have time to make the agreements when we talk about those kinds of things. So those are all really important things. Plus, in Sunset Valley, we're really spoiled. We do things the Sunset Valley way. And, you know, when you have the streets being done, it's not the same way that you get it when you're in Austin. People say, get out of the way. Here we go. How do we help you out of your driveway? Those are all very different things that talk about our Sunset Valley experience that make us who we are. So those are my comments about how we move forward together. Now, I'm going to talk a little bit about maybe the slightly less positive aspect of this, the things that I'm a little concerned about in what happened to us. If you see all the stuff that I put in advance of that, there's just a whole lot of facts and figures. And what those things all say was, we didn't have the same data. The reductions in cuts vary between 12.2 or something like that to 23%. I've sort of moved my notes here. But they're about it. In the 12s to 23, what we did, none of them were really consistent. And those are a matter of concern because we need to have good data to make good decisions. And then there's kind of a strange faction in there. We have the lovely Susannah who has joined us. I had the pleasure of meeting her. But her position of accountant isn't in any of those figures. That's a disturbing thing to me, that we have ghost numbers in there. I think probably OpenGov is in there. And it's not a nefarious thing, but it is a little bit of a misleading thing in those numbers. And it's still not there. I looked in OpenGov. It's still not there. And that's a matter of concern, that you can have essentially something that's a 70,000, thank you for putting up there because that'll show the figures on that one. You have something that's in the neighborhood of a $73,000 to $109,000 item because I don't really know what the, that's from the posting, not even in the data. And so that's kind of a concern, that we're not just, that there's a wide range. And yes, we've been in a different situation and stuff, but still, we can go slowly. We can make good decisions based on everybody having the same information, and especially financial information. So there were lacks of processes. People's voices weren't getting heard, and it was hard to get them heard. That's a thing that, there's a sort of, I guess, things that concerned me about our process. You know, when we submitted arguments about we didn't like the way things were going, they didn't actually get to the city attorney, you know, other than verbally, the processes to that could use some tweaking. So there's a lot of things about process that give me pause, and I just need to say those things into the record. And then the biggest thing that I think most people, the residents that I was speaking to, and there were probably about a couple of dozen or more that wrote in, and lots of former mayors and city council members who also signed in, and the dismay about, you know, Sunset Valley doesn't treat our staff this way. So I felt like I needed an opportunity to say that, that there was a significant amount, and I wanted to be, I wanted to give voice to those feelings. And I know that there's a lot of zeal to the people who are doing what they think is the best way to move us forward. And I want to honor that too, because good people can have different opinions and try to move forward together. But I want to show in this presentation that we really do need to pay attention to the people, and we need more people. And the way that I want to do that is to create an OpenGov experience for you. So if you would, Sylvia, move it to the sheets where I have the positions just above that last one towards the very bottom. So it'd probably be like the third one up from the very bottom. There we go. Thank you so much. So this is now in the backup, and I would like people, in an OpenGov sort of way, to talk about the continuity. So these positions were how we were when we functioned as Sunset Valley. This is how we're budgeted for the year. And these are tasks that we, being us as Sunset Valley, believe we like doing. And this is what we would probably hope to be closer to reconstituted at the end. And we may need extra people to get to get back there. So when we do this, when we look at these positions and the things that they need to do, we're supposed to be three-deep at least. That's what the continuity information will tell us. And by position, not by people's names, but by position. And just play with it yourself, you know? Just go to the thing and see if you can see the backups. And we have it, you know, pretty well done in the police department. But when you look at so far, the administration, and you look at the public works, we're not three-deep. And if we hit 20% to 40% drops, we're really going to be in trouble, especially if you do the random factor, like you pull out the one person in charge of water, or you pull out the city administrator who is the backup for so much. Then our system really does fail, and we really do need to look at getting those positions filled. So I really do encourage you to look at playing that game of move around the positions and try to get three-deep. Now hopefully, this will be all remedied, and we will do that. But I just don't think it's even possible to do that with the amount of people we have right now. And I think we need to bring back people because this is the important part that we need to deal with. Otherwise, we're like having a fire and throwing gasoline. That is kind of, when we cut ourselves people, when we're in a people-depleted situation, that's a concern. So that's pretty much my presentation. I want to say that I appreciate people's goodwill and hard efforts and hard work. I want us to get there together, and I think that there's value into the conversation. But I just wanted to put out there that people are who we need in this situation. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I will say, not all of us agree with what you just said. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
And I appreciate that, Councilmember Rosengarden. I honor that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I think this is one of the points I brought up early on when we were dealing with COVID-19 and how we deal with disasters and the cycle. and how we deal with disasters, and the cycle of disasters, and how we need to be planning for dealing with disasters. And one of the things I brought up in the continuity thing was, you know, what happens if one of our key top three people in that plan gets sick or can't perform their duties, and filling in the blanks of who would take that place? So I do think that we need to really seriously look at how we staff, our response, and mitigation for the future. Thank you.
Councilmember Reitz?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to point out that I think, as a small city, we need to be cognizant of our resources. And we need to look for innovative solutions. And one, I believe, is partnering with other cities. Just down the road is Rollingwood, Texas. And I think if we were in, if we wanted to staff or look for additional resources for a pandemic, I think we have to be creative. I don't think that small cities in general can afford to staff for any type of disaster. They have to have a core group, and that core group needs to be able to perform and contact the resources that are available through other cities and the county. Also, I guess my question would be to our city administrator. Do we, are you concerned that we are not able to provide essential services at this point?
Thank you, Councilmember Reitz. No, I'm not. There's a couple of things to be clear on the three-deep. And one, obviously, I'm always in the mix, no matter what. That's what makes me an administrator. I have managed development areas who are in charge of infrastructure. That's probably my bailiwick, on top of being a credentialed manager, so I'm always in the mix. If you also recall, in early January, when we were talking succession and we were talking a reorganization of the staff, I had encouraged that Chief Carter be in the succession plan and act on my behalf and take on some additional responsibilities. The council chose not to do that. But that doesn't mean that the chief is not already taking on additional responsibilities. The next layer to that is, when we lost the Public Works Director, while we lost the position, the two incumbents below her were already taken on, had already taken on additional duties for years. This is just a way to bring compensation to them. So as we cut programs and as we cut services, obviously, there is a staffing component that has to be reduced as well. With the new engineer that is really, and I said this at my interview, I said this at the council retreat, and I've said it in a number of open sessions, that our engineers and our consultants really need to be an extension of staff. And they have not always been treated that way. I want to treat them that way, which would allow our engineers to behave more as the operations manager slash project manager position that was eliminated. And I had this conversation with our engineers way back in November and December. So as we start ramping up, I would love to begin to add staff, but I would add staff at the lower-level positions, the actual boots on the ground who are providing the service. And on top of that, I would first ask the community which one of those programs and services they'd like to see to be dependent on staffing. Right now, we are covering essential services, and we do have contracts with TDS. We do have contracts with Austin. We do have those agencies. So at this particular moment, I do not have any concerns.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, do you have any additional comments? Do you have any resident comments? Charles Quayette?
Yes, hello.
Hi.
Couple things. I appreciate what Sylvia just had to say, that she felt that she had the situation in hand. And that applies to Councilmember Reitz as well, in terms of, we have an economy of scale here, the situation at hand. We're a very small entity, and to expect us to be able to go three-deep in a situation, I think is just not practical. I also would like to say that I think it's important that, I don't know quite how to say this without sounding like another bad actor, but, you know, I mean, we had to lose, I believe we had to lose some employees at this point in time, given our situation at hand. And, you know, with every bad situation, there's, you know, what has a back has a front. I see this as an opportunity to streamline our operations a little bit. I mean, what was our city 20 years ago, 15 years ago? I mean, it was half the size, staff-wise, as it is now, or as it was just, you know, two months ago. I mean, did we need all of this growth? I mean, the city didn't grow population-wise by hardly at all. But yet, our staff, our city staff doubled. You know, I mean, you know, someone could look at that with a cocked eye and say, "Hey, what's up? What's going on with that?" You know, and as far as disasters, I mean, you know, we could get nuked tomorrow. I mean, where do we, I mean, I can come up with all kinds of serious scenarios where, you know, three-deep, five-deep, 25-deep, it's not going to make any difference. So I mean, we got to be practical in terms of these disasters that we prepare for. I mean, we can all come up with situations that are untenable and practical to even worry about conceiving of in terms of how to react, respond to it. I mean, you know, there's a certain element in life that we just have to take our chances, right? I walk out the door, the sun could, you know, the roof could cave in on me. I don't know, I could get hit by a car on the street. I mean, I could get into an accident. I could be gone tomorrow. I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but I think this is a response to a situation that is not comfortable. I realize how Melissa is, you know, is feeling for the loss of employees in the city. I appreciate that. I have compassion for that situation. But in the grand scheme of things, I think we did what we had to do. And I think we can find the silver lining in this situation, and we can all grow. We can all improve. We can make ourselves a better city. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same size. We can streamline the operation. We can be more efficient. We can run better. We can come out of this, and we can come out of this better than we came into it, if we take the right approach and we have the right attitude. For what it's worth. Thank you.
Any additional comments? We are now moving to item number 11. Consider alternate procedures for human resource concerns or complaints about either the city administrator and/or the mayor when they are involved in the concern or complaint and related HR issues like retaliation or grievance processes. Councilmember Gonzalez, this is your item, and so you have the floor.
Mayor, I was trying to finish one comment on the last agenda item, and so I want to just make that comment. I couldn't get recognized. I just want to point out that we are below the 2004 staffing level in public works, before we had the Villas, before we had one of the shopping centers. We, that there are costs to these agreements that we don't know, and that it takes a long time to get them. That's the one point that I don't think that we've really taken into account. And I do look forward to seeing the continuity of records, the continuity plan that, by position, that the city administrator did say she was going to provide us. So, moving on to the next one.
Actually, Councilmember Gonzalez, I'd like to, just since you brought up the public works department, I would like to see Sylvia and staff give us a better presentation of the history of that department, because a little bit of research I've done, it's hard for me to mesh when I look at the number of households versus the number of commercial growth that we saw from 2001, to say, you mentioned when the Villas was built. So from 2005 to 2010, we increased households from 192 to 244. We went from seven public works employees to nine. We went from six contractors to seven. It's still very hard for me to understand what actually changed from a public works service point, because the addition of houses, I don't quite understand how that justifies the jump in the employees. And then when I look farther back, which I thought to do this when Alfonso mentioned a few weeks back, he was discussing changes in numbers historically. And so when I look at the public works department, say, you know, 1995, four employees, three contractors, whereas in the last year, we had 11 employees and nine contractors. It's not that I want to say the conclusion that that makes sense or doesn't make sense, but that's just it. I've never seen an actual explanation of what justifies that growth in the public works expenses and why we need it in people and contractors. So I do look forward to staff giving us that clear presentation so that when we build up the public works department, we scale it correctly for emergency needs, but that we also make sure that what we're paying for is very clear to residents and that it embraces the things that are the highest priorities, such as trail maintenance, street maintenance, just like what we do with the PD. Item number 10, it's all yours.
Thank you. This is kind of just a cleanup item. I don't know if we appended what I sent to council to the agenda item. Did we do that? I know we did that with the previous item. Did we put that, the second document, to this agenda item?
You sent that to Matt. Let me check if it, would it be at the bottom? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
Are you talking about the previous item, Melissa?
No. I'm talking about, on this item, the HR item. Everything else is gone now, and all I have in front of me is the HR item, after these big stacks of paper. And I sent a document to council that I asked the council to read, but I don't know whether it got into the agenda item for the public to read, which was a TML document on HR process.
I'm clear on what you're asking now, yes. It wasn't today. I can't remember what day you sent that. You asked that that be sent to council. It was. You did not ask that that be added to the backup. You then asked that information be added to the backup for item number 10. You requested that today, and even though it was past the posting deadline, Matt did comply and add that to the backup.
Yeah. No, I didn't know he was going to. I just wanted it for the screen, but that was great. But anyway, so in that other document, which is just a legal brief that I found after the fact in one of my many conversations with TML, this was really just backup for a cleanup item in the HR manual, because there isn't really a clear process for what happens in the case of the people who, so for backup. The HR manual is administered by the city administrator and the mayor, under different situations. And if someone has a challenge with both those people, they have to find a council member who's not involved with their challenge to take it to. That council member has to have the information about how to handle that, which I don't know any of us that do, and how to keep it confidential, and who to go to when you may not have access to the attorney, because you have to go through the two other people to get to that. So there isn't a good process for that in our HR manual. And this is just a cleanup item that I wanted to bring forward to us, because it's a thing that protects us legally. And that's what that document that I circulated says. It says, if you have a good process, a good clean process for a concern, then that needs to be brought, you know, it could be harassment. It could be a hostile workplace. It could be any number of things that would concern a person. And they don't, you are much more protected as a city if you have a good, clear process for this. And so it had been mentioned to me at a previous time that there wasn't a good, clear process for this. And I didn't, and it was kind of a vague reference, and I didn't see it until I started really pouring in to the HR manual as I was working on any number of these other issues. And that is when I went, "Oh, I see." And so that is what this is, a cleanup item, is that we really just need to have that particular item dealt with so that we, as a city, are protected and that employees, and it says it in several pages in this document, that people feel better when you have a formal reporting channel in process. And I'm sure that we can get this established with our new legal counsel. And so I'm just asking for authorization, and hopefully people have read the backup, and it makes sense to them that we should do this. And that's pretty much it.
Mayor, if I may make comment to that?
Yes.
So in other cities that I'm accustomed to, Councilmember Gonzalez is absolutely correct. There is a formal process, and that process is similar, but not exact to what we have in Sunset Valley. And the first is, if you have a problem with the city manager, city administrator, you take it to the mayor. If you have a problem with the mayor, you take it to the council. If you have a problem with the council member, you begin a recall. You know, obviously, we're not at recall, and she's at the administrator-mayor phase. What I'm accustomed to is when there's a complaint regarding the administrator and the mayor, and it needs to be taken to council, that complaint is formally filed with the city secretary, because she is the legal repository to that. Our current HR manual speaks to that, but it speaks to that in the sexual harassment portion of the policy. So my recommendation would be to adopt that policy portion to the rest of the HR manual, and I think that cleans up her concerns.
Mayor? Councilmember Gonzalez?
It really doesn't. There isn't a clear process. Things like confidentiality, the ways to do investigations, none of that is really, I mean, I've gone over that thing a couple of times, and there really isn't clear process, and it's not a clear process to the staff. So just adopting that wouldn't solve a lot of the problems. And I think we don't have to solve all of them here tonight if we agree that it's a problem. I can spend a lot of time putting out all the points that I think are important, piece by piece. And if we agree that it's something that we think would be a good protection to the city, and then, you know, we can address it sort of more offline. But I don't think we, I really don't think we have a clear process there. And I think it's a cleanup item.
So would that apply to the sexual harassment piece as well? Or the whole policy, or just that piece?
No, I think just the grievance process is obvious. It's like the same process. If you have a complaint that involves the, you know, any subset of people, there needs to be a clear path. I don't know that we have to say, but when you have it as the two administrating people, there isn't a clear path out, and that is a concern. And I struggle with being able to present one, you know? And I did research and whatever, and I didn't really have a clear one. I think it would be a question for the lawyers. I got a lot of possible ones, but I didn't have one that would say, "Oh yeah, here's a head and shoulders solution to that." So otherwise, I would have brought that to you. But I did bring the problem, and I think that perhaps our new attorneys, that there may be a canned piece that they have in a different city that they've already solved this with, and they can say, "Oh yeah, here's our piece. This is what we did over here." And so I just, I bring forth the problem, and I think that, you know, some clear, and clear issues about, you know, retaliation being really clearly done where people feel really safe and secure, you know, there just isn't those kinds of protections. and secure, you know, there just isn't those kinds of protections in our HR manual. And I just think that they should be. And we've had legal actions in the past. And I think that if you look at, if you look at the backup that I provided to council, it shows you clearly that our legal position is much stronger when, and it even gives the possibility of never having had a legal action because there's a clear process where people can feel heard. So, that's the whole of my position. I don't believe that what we have is sufficient.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes. In looking at the section on sexual harassment, in just my brief reading of it, it seems pretty thorough, and it does, it does talk about confidentiality as a need-to-know basis. So, this could be a very good model for, to use to do as Sylvia has suggested. And so, what I would suggest is that Sylvia, if you could use this as a model, and see if this would deal with Councilmember Gonzalez's issues, but use this as a model and formulate a new policy and bring that back to us.
Yes, I can work with her. And the comment that Councilmember Reitz is making is, at the top of page 14, it says, "All complaints will be investigated as appropriate. Information regarding the complaint and investigation will be shared only on a need-to-know basis and as reasonably necessary to investigate the allegations." We can certainly put forth a more formal process to that. I am not disagreeing with the fact that we have a lot of things that do not have a process to them. So, happy to work on that.
Councilmember Gonzalez, will that satisfy your concerns?
Thank you, Councilmember Reitz. We can certainly start there and see if we run into a roadblock that I haven't seen in that way. But yes, we'll, you know, it's a start, right? And starting is all we need to do.
You know, and it's, I have found, sometimes when we get a draft of something before we contact our attorneys, we might save some monies as opposed to having them draft it from scratch. And so, I think I'd like to see what our city administrator could come up with and kind of run that by council. And then, at that point, we could run it by, or somewhere in that process, we can run it by legal.
That sounds perfectly reasonable to me, Councilmember Reitz.
Thank you.
Am I, I want to ensure that I've understood correctly. Are the two of you going to co-sponsor bringing that item back?
I'm happy to, if you would like to do that with me, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Absolutely, Councilmember Reitz. I would love to do that with you.
Great.
Great. Do we have any additional, any additional comments or questions from councilmembers? Any resident comments? Mark, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. This issue, as I'm sure most of you know, is dear to my heart. I think I can speak from experience of somebody who actually went through this process. I think those of you who know the incident about the shed on my property, it all started with that and a busybody former council member and a questionable previous city administrator. I filed complaints, which the council has, and again, I was trying to pull this up, trying to pull my file up, and I'm not able to find it on my computer at the moment, what I did with that file. But the deficiencies that I saw, and believe me, I will be more than happy to work with Councilmember Gonzalez and to the, with the city administrator, and also Councilmember Reitz on this. The deficiencies that I saw were in our city code of ordinances. Now, I can't remember if it was chapter 31 or 51. They're like a paper tiger. They have no teeth whatsoever. And again, I'm not, I don't want to talk about just sexual harassment or any other specific issue. But what I'm wanting to do is, I'm wanting to look at our code of ordinances, and I will be more than happy to sit down with them. And if I can, let's see, I had some suggestions that I'd like to, some amendments that I'd like to make to the code. And then, I'd be more than happy to have the city attorney to go over those. But basically, there was no, and I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez in this, is there was no apparent remedy in our code of ordinances. And again, excuse me, but I don't know if it was 31 or 51. But I'm willing to sit down with them and go over those. And we can use some of my complaints that I've written even as a template. But again, I have some, I have some great ideas, and somebody who went through the legal mud pit with our former city, thank God, our former city administrator, he's no longer a city administrator now. So, yeah, and I think I did mention this, or I think Councilmember Gonzalez mentioned this a while ago, and I agreed with her at the time, that, yeah, we need to, that the code, if I'm not mistaken, and again, I'm not speaking for her, but this is, if I remember correctly, that we do need to revisit that and take a look at it. So, I think that's something that we need to make stronger, and I think is lacking in our city code of ordinances. So, yeah, so, like I say, I will make myself available for that, and that's something that I've been wanting to do anyway. So, yeah, let me think. Yep, I believe that's it. So, please, y'all have my email, contact me, and I'm going to reach out to you, to all three of you. And let's see if we can get, let's see if we can get this done and hopefully make our city code of ordinances that deal with this specific subject more, what do you say, more, anyway, more, I lost the, I lost for words, but more relevant. Thank you.
Any additional comments? And I will wait for one or both of you to, actually, what would be ideal would be if one of you emails and includes Sylvia, Rayjean, and myself so that it's completely clear to all of us what date you'd like to sponsor that item to come back, and what language you would like for the agenda item. I won't put it on the agenda planner until I get that email either from Councilmember Reitz or Gonzalez or from the city secretary. That moves us to item number 12, "Presentation and direction to staff regarding venue tax follow-up from the April 7, 2020 meeting, including possible action to terminate the tax." Before we get into this, because I do think the perception that I got from reading feedback over the last few days was that the wording in the agenda alerted many people. And so, I kind of would like for Sylvia to start by just explaining how that happens because it was not worded that way because we were intending to take something away without community input. There really was a logical path as to why the agenda item was worded that way.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, this was listed as a presentation. And if you recall, on April 7, or maybe folks don't recall, there were several items, I think there were six or seven items that the council wanted follow-up on. And we had presentation tonight on the venue tax. When our city attorney reviewed the agenda, he made note that there was some comment from some of the council members about an alternative method to the tax or alternative use to the tax. And that's why he included the possible action. It was just to really make sure our bases were covered, and two, so he wouldn't get criticized for really not having been prepared for tonight's agenda item. I think everybody's discussion has been, okay, what is the option for the venue tax and how do we move forward? And if the direction from the council is, thank you, but no, thank you, then I assume, and maybe wrongfully so, that the council will then say, okay, Sylvia, go forth and find other alternatives. What are we going to do in terms of revenue? So, with that, I will, Mayor, does that suffice?
Yes, and sort of to follow up a conversation that Sylvia and I had today, as people are asking, well, what does staff think, or what, you know, what's the agenda? So, in reading some of the feedback, I can't remember who wrote it, but somebody said, "It'd be nice if you would just come right out and say if you're trying to abolish the venue tax." That's not what I'm trying to do. So, if there is somebody that's trying to do that, that is not what I'm trying to do. What my intention was with this tax was to make sure that we had a good understanding of what the actual legal basis is for the tax, and to understand the history in a very proper, complete way, the history of how we have spent the money, in part to ensure if the green intentions that the ballot approved as the venue for that money to be used for, to ensure that we are using it in a way that matches what residents think we're using it for. I can't speak for others. I can only speak for myself. I've been an elected official for 10 years now, over 10 years. It's not clear to me. So, if it truly is clear to residents, if it truly is clear to every single member of the Planning and Environmental Committee, I'd be shocked. I just don't think that that's true. I think that there are residents and elected officials who have piecemeal understanding of it. But even the fact that it is a venue tax, that is an important fact to me, and it's important that we make that clear to residents. And one question that I had for Sylvia and Doug, that I've never been able to completely understand, is when you create a venue tax, can it stay open in perpetuity? And I don't know which of you can respond to that.
So, Mayor, well, Doug and I have been back and forth. And so, I'm, and I've shared some experience with Doug on what things end up happening in perpetuity, and how I have become intimately familiar with both venue tax and other taxes such as this. So, and Doug, feel free to chime in when you'd like to. So, normally, taxes such as this are used to finance larger projects. Hence, it's called a venue. Some people call it a sports tax, some people call it an arena tax. The city of Sunset Valley has chosen the venue to be a quote-unquote "green" tax, a protection of the aquifer tax, watershed quality, the specific ballot language. The tax can be abolished by ordinance, by council ordinance, and the legislature was very clear on that. This venue tax has not been used to finance anything. And so, my experience, and with lots of TML attorneys and courts and et cetera, et cetera, has been a municipal development district tax, which was also a portion of sales tax, that we used to build a pool, and we used to build a city convention center. You can't abolish the tax until those bond obligations are paid. In the case of the venue tax, there is no obligation. Those obligations have already been met. The purchase was made in cash. And if the venue tax went away, the operation of that venue would then be taken from some other fund, most likely the general fund or some other fund that could be created potentially in its absence. The discussion about the money belongs to the municipality is also something that is kind of swirling out there. And that was in one of the prior slides. And I want to go through the slide deck so that we can, you know, at least get to the point of discussion so everybody knows where we're talking about and how we got here. Doug, do you want to add anything before I go on?
Are you talking to me, Sylvia?
Yeah. Do you want to add anything before I go on?
Well, I would just add that the use of the term "finance" in the statute usually is associated with bonds or other debt instruments, but it also means just paying money for infrastructure and the things that are authorized by it. So, things have been financed with the venue tax, acquisition of property, improvements to water quality systems, that sort of thing. It can go on forever, or it can be repealed by the council by ordinance at any time, only if there had been bonds issued, would have some provision need to be made to make sure that, you can't cut off funding sources securing bonds. That's not a restriction that applies here.
Doug, can I, I want to make sure I didn't misunderstand you. The venue can go in perpetuity, or it is not supposed to?
It can go in perpetuity.
Okay.
Okay. So, we're going to go into the historical, which was, again, chapter 334. It's created, "The venue is a sports and community venue." In this case, I want to highlight the community venue because that's what this city opted to do. It is not, we didn't build an arena or anything like that. It's a community venue. And it is to protect the Edwards Aquifer, first along Brody Lane or Countrywide, and then expanded to include all of the city and its ETJ. Watershed protection, acquisition of property, acquisition of conservation easements. So, that's sort of step one. How much do we collect and how much is in the bank? 1.5 million as of a few days ago. We have a reserve required of 1, 2, 3, 5. That's a city policy. There's no legal requirement other than that's a council policy, that's a financial policy the council has dictated. This year's budget expense was 390,000. That's what was budgeted. That wasn't really what was expected to be drawn down. And if you go look at the budget at a glance that we have out there, I believe it was about 290,000 or so. There was about $100,000 that would have fallen back to fund balance. There are some salaries included in there. I also had a question on how much salaries are paid out of that venue tax. And this year, there's about $51,000 of salaries that were paid out of the venue tax. So, we go to historical usage, and this is where it gets a little bit muddy. We had to change in accounting of how we originally handled the venue tax. It was included in the general fund. So, there are transfers among funds that aren't necessarily as clear as they are now, when its own fund was established and we charged things solely against that fund. Much more clear, but in the beginning, when we started, it maybe wasn't as clear. So, then the question was asked, the council posed the question, well, what can it be used for? So, we can use it to increase the general sales tax, but no more than the state maximum. We can't exceed what the state allows us to charge. We can create a special purpose tax, which would allow us to have property tax relief if we so chose. We could establish an economic development corporation, which was a type A or type B, or we could increase the crime control tax. Those are possible options if we made changes to the venue tax. So, the next thing we were asked is about a timeline. Let me see if I can zoom this in more. We were asked about, okay, so if we decided to make a change, what does that look like? And my response to the council at that time, and it's now shown on the timeline, is that we're under a very short timeframe if that is what the council is intending to do. You have a vote within May or June. You place it on the ballot. There's approval of the ballot language. All of that happens into early summer, early midsummer. We have some education components that although not legally required, usually help you defend in court later on should anybody try to argue against. And then, the vote is taken in November. If it's approved, collections will begin usually in the second quarter of 2021. And that's because we have to give the state 60-day notice that we have stopped the tax and are now starting another. So, there's a little bit of carryover period. We may receive collections a little bit before this if we give notice way sooner, but consistent collections will probably begin the second quarter of 2021. Now, there are some questions that were swirling as to what happens if the venue tax is abolished, but a new tax is not approved. And I have heard three sort of pots out there. I have heard, one, let's add it to the crime tax so that we can pay for the police department. I have heard, no, if we're going to do away with it, let's not add it to the sales tax because... because we have a competitive advantage for having a lower sales tax here. And then I've also heard the, no, we need to leave it as is because we don't even know, we don't know what's going on with the economy. And the last part is if we add it to the general fund, you generally hear the sucking sound where it, it gets taken by, you know, other more important items of the council, you know, necessary items. So the pros, what is, it would be additional relief for the general fund. So one of the discussions was if we really indeed read the ballot language and we really indeed look at our initiatives within Public Works, is there anything within Public Works that really fits into that venue tax? My argument from day one has been, yes, I believe so. But the city historically has taken a very narrow view of what that venue tax was to be used for. The cons to that is if we did away with the tax, any green space acquisition would be paid through the general fund. And then the other, you know, big elephant in the room is the general fund is often absorbed by public safety or other contractual obligations, retirement, step increases, contractual obligations with the city of Austin for water and fire. So the general fund is always the workhorse within, you know, any city budget. So tonight, we were seeking council directive. That, I mean, if you look at the last slide, it says council directive. It does not say action to abolish or anything like that. And I know some of what is swirling out there, at least some of the comments that I read on Open Town Hall have that discussion. Like I said, Planning and Environmental is going to go through their activity, very much like the Public Works Committee did last week. Planning and Environmental is doing that this week. My comment to staff and my comment to the liaison has been, one of the things we have to figure out is if we're going to add programs and services back, can the venue tax absorb it? Is it something that can be independent of the general fund? And if the answer is yes, then the second component to that is how sustainable is that venue tax, understanding that we have a severe reduction within the sales tax? So, um, I'm not necessarily in agreement with Doug that it can happen in perpetuity. I think the voters need to refresh it, but it doesn't have a stipulated end date the way the crime control tax does. I just think it's good practice that the voters, you know, at some points, especially if there's no outstanding obligation against the tax, revisit it. But that would be entirely an internal policy decision. So. Thank you.
Thank you Sylvia. So what I would like to do first is to get two things from council members' questions, because this really is the best forum for us. Like the question I just asked, it's not because I'm pushing a specific outcome, it's that I want to make sure that I understand the origins of this tax, how it's been used, and what the best way to use it is, especially looking at the ballot choice that the voters made. It's making sure that we're doing right by the funds as we're continuing to obtain them. Now, other council members may have additional questions that are for different purposes, where they just want to make sure they're properly educated. The other thing that would be helpful before we move to resident comments would be for council to, to lead Sylvia in the direction she just said, which is there's two easy questions that would be helpful for you guys to direct us on. One, is there an actual intention to put something on a ballot this November? If no, that conversation can just end. The only reason that conversation is occurring is because it is a time sensitive conversation where action has to be created in the month of May and June, otherwise it can't happen. Sylvia, Doug, myself, we didn't want to end up in a situation where council members thought we were moving down that line and we missed it because we didn't bring the information tonight, which was requested on April 7th. So if council can sort of give that clear direction before we open it to resident comments so that residents are making sure to speak to what's actually about to happen next. Councilmember Medicus?
Thank you Mayor. I think that it's very clear, the intent of our residents when they voted on this item, over 80% of our residents voted for this item. And I think that there are options for a public works projects and also for P and E, which we'll be reviewing on Thursday, to be utilizing this fund, which we're currently not using, and that would give relief to the general fund. So I'd like to make a motion that we leave the venue green tax as is.
Thank you, Councilmember Medicus. I'm going to ask that, I'm going to actually put everybody's hand down since there was a motion made. And if there is a second to that motion, if you would please raise your hand so that I can recognize you. And Councilmember Medicus, would you repeat the motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do not change the green tax. We leave the venue green tax as it is.
And is that motion specific to this election year? Or do you want to specify?
Well, I think definitely for this year, especially since we don't know where we're going financially in the future, but I don't think we should, I don't think we should change it. Period.
We have a motion, do we have a second, which will open it for discussion? And so the motion is to not make any changes to the green tax fund. And my understanding, Councilmember Medicus, is that you don't want to be any more specific. You just want to keep it.
Yes, I could. So I would add that I'd like to see no changes to the venue green tax for the next five years.
Five years, okay. And if this motion dies, certainly a different motion can be made. We have a motion, do we have a second? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Gonzalez, it was, your hand was down at the bottom. Councilmember Gonzalez, you're, it looks like you're self muted.
Councilmember Medicus, can I, can I make a friendly amendment? That it, it is limited to this election cycle? I, I'd be willing to second limited to this, to this election cycle. And, and not that we can, we can't even bind future councils anyway. So, um, so I, I would, I would like to make a friendly amendment that we, that we, that your motion is for this election cycle. And I, and I'll second that.
And you define this election cycle?
Uh, yeah, well, the November, that's, that's, we're talking about getting it on the November ballot. It's this council, you know, it, it, it's, you know, what, it's a reasonable, yeah.
So that would, let me just, for clarity, I just want to make sure that would make sure that we didn't make any changes to this unless it came before the new council for ballot in 2021?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm just speaking to the uncertainty of the situation, the, the potential, you know, loss of fund if we were to do this and then not be successful in our tax base because there, there would be potentially a loss of taxes if we cancel this one and then don't, and then are not successful in, in the election. So I, I, I just think it's too uncertain a time to do this, apart from obviously P and E and N W A and all these other reasons, but, but, but that's what's speaking to my time constraint.
Can we, look, Councilmember Medicus, do you want to accept that change? And if so, would you read back the motion the way that you intended to be?
No, I lost my. Okay, so my motion would be not to pursue changing the venue green tax in this council seat. And what, what's the terminology? Sorry, running a blank.
Election cycle.
In this election cycle.
And so that is the motion. And Councilmember Gonzalez, you were the second? Thank you. Um, that opens it for discussion. And, um, sorry Karen, that, I think where Councilmember Gonzalez is going is what I was looking for, which is you can't bind future councils. And so that election cycle, I think quiets part of the concern I heard from residents, which was, are you or are you not trying to put something on the next ballot? And so with this motion, if it passes, the clear answer to me, staff and residents would be, no, we are not looking to put it on this ballot, which means the concept of collecting it is not going to be changed. But now that it's open for discussion, I would encourage council members to discuss, does that also include council taking action to change it? Because the uniqueness in the venue tax is that you certainly can put it on the ballot, but that does not a legal requirement. And so I think part of what residents would also be looking for is, okay, so you said you're not going to put it on a ballot, but is there any intention for council to change it, change the amount or how we collect it by way of council action? Councilmember Medicus?
So, um, yes, all these little nuances. I, I would like to amend it so that we not only not put it on the ballot, but council takes no action to eliminate it. Is that?
Does the, yes. Yes, so that makes it clear that it would be not eliminated or changed in terms of amount or how it's collected by either ballot or council action during this election cycle, which would be until the next council is seated.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, do you accept that?
Yes.
And Ray Jean, while we are continuing to discuss and get resident feedback on this, would you please make sure that you have a good, clean version of that to read back before we take a vote? Because this will be one where I know there are residents that are going to want to make sure they're very clear on what was voted on this evening. Councilmember Elliott, and then Councilmember Reitz. Councilmember Elliott, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. I, I, I want to make some comments and then ask some questions, actually. First of all, I'm glad you clarified what the intent was by putting this on the agenda tonight, number one. Number two, I think this, whether, whatever we do, this is a decision that has to be decided or will be decided by the residents. And I think what I would like to do, and I, I'm sensitive to the timeframe here, is I'd like to use the time so that the residents can express their opinion in an informed manner. I think what we did, what Sylvia did tonight and put in this presentation certainly takes that level of education to the next level. But at the end of the day, I, as a council member, want to reflect the wishes of the people. And I want those wishes to be well informed and have time for them to digest. So I'm not comfortable saying we should not put it on a ballot. I'm not comfortable saying we should put it on the ballot. That's the, the second thing. The third thing, I have some questions on this that would be, I think residents will ask me, and some of which I'm about to ask, they've already asked me. What are the, what, i- if you look at the way it has been used, the vast majority of it's been used to fund acquisitions of properties, our land. I'd like to know clearly what those definitions are used when, when we decide to make an acquisition, what, what is beneficial for the aquifer? What is beneficial to our water quality? That would be the first question that would be, what is that definition? The second thing I would ask is, if we look back and we, I'd like to see a full inventory of the property, the property we have bought and the criteria we use to buy that property and how now it satisfies that criteria. That would be the second thing. The third thing is, and it goes back to a point Sylvia raised, we have to understand we're stewards of our environment. And I'm not, so this is a tactical question, but uses of the green tax. I understand that we lose or waste about 10 to 20% of our water right now. Water is a precious commodity. Is that something we could use green tax funds or the venue tax to address? Could we use that to address our water wastage problem? That's a tactical question, and I apologize for springing it, but that would be, that is a question I've been asked and I'm not being able to give an answer to the residents. So I guess my answer is, I want a lot of residents input here. They're the ultimate decider here. I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable saying yes or no to taking it on or off the ballot. I am very comfortable to say, what is the timeframe and how do we get the message out so residents can make an informed decision?
Sylvia, yeah, I think I was going to say, I want to let you answer his questions before we move to more questions.
Okay, so the first part of it, in terms of being able to review what property has been acquired and how it helps the watershed, we can certainly come back with a report on that. The one about water loss is, and I don't know if Mr. Carmo is on anymore or not, but, you know, I, I'm not a betting woman. I am not a betting woman. I work too hard for my money. But I can tell you categorically that we do not know how much water we lose. What I can tell you right now is how much water comes in through the meter, and I can tell you how much water we charge for. That's what I can tell you through our own meters. We have some meters that are very, very old that I can tell you aren't even reading 70% accurate. We have some meters that have been changed out that are reading more accurate than others. I do not have a complete and comprehensible way to give you an accurate water loss that I would be able to stand up in court with my hands. That being said, I don't believe that the venue tax can fund a water project. We have a utility fund and, and an infrastructure fund that could fund those types of projects. The other piece though, that really is, and I don't want to say subject to interpretation because this watershed protection is broad. I think there are some things that we do within the general fund right now that qualifies watershed protection. For example, some of the tree clearing and things that, that serves as natural filtration systems and, you know, we're, we're charging those to a different fund while this one is growing a healthy reserve. Not that there's anything wrong, but my question to staff has been, well, how much property are we still trying to acquire? Because if not this council or another council wants to make a determination to do away with the venue tax, obviously there are still operational expenses for property that we have acquired. And so, Councilmember, while I can't give you the specific written criteria for how, how we acquire property, I can certainly tell you that I'd really like to work with all of the council to develop that criteria now and bring that back along with how our current properties meet that.
Councilmember Elliott, are there any follow up questions you have before I move to the next? Or did she answer everything you needed?
Well, yes, she certainly did, and I appreciate the response. I, I do want to make a mention, and I'm in agreement with, I think what Councilmember Medicus said, I'm not sure we understand, even if we were, if there was a motion in the future to move forward on eliminating it, what the protection would be so that we don't lose the revenue from the, uh, the venue tax and not replace it with an increase in the sales tax. I, I don't think, I'm not clear that there is a mechanism or, and I didn't hear the legal opinion on that, of how we could make that, you know, as bulletproof as possible.
The reality is, it's going to be up to the voters. And, and that's, that's also a big concern is, I said, there's a contingent of the population who thinks it's a competitive advantage to have a lower sales tax rate. And so if those are the folks that show up at the polls and, you know, one tax is gone and the other one is not approved, then we're going to live with that for a little while.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes, I would have to say I am, I am quite undecided about this. I thought this would be just a, a discussion and a learning process this evening. So I do have a couple of thoughts. One is, I would like to see a kind of a vision for how, of, of how to use, utilize these funds. We, I mean, it seems like the majority of it has been in land acquisition. Is, are there pieces of property that we have identified that that would be a good acquisition for the city, within the city? If, if so, I would be really interested in knowing about that. And the other thought is that, you know, we've used nearly all of it for that. We've used about 75,000 to do various other things, and then 59,000 for the Brody Lane hazmat traps. And so we have not really utilized this fund very well, from my perspective. But unless it was solely meant for land acquisition, or if that was the major purpose of it, which I don't believe. I don't believe that really was. So I would be very interested to see and understand the vision, and I'm hoping that the Planning Environmental can come up with that vision a bit and, and put it forth. So I think it's important that we do protect our green spaces, but I, it doesn't make sense for, this might just be sitting in, in tech school, from that perspective. And the other side of me says, okay, it is nice to have flexibility. So if this tax were abolished, what happens, my question is, what happens to the funds that are in there, the 1.5 million that's in there now? Does that stay in a green tax fund or does it move to the general fund? So that's a question that I have.
It stays in the venue.
What?
It stays in the venue fund and it has to be depleted for the approved venue uses. Now, Doug and I had a crazy conversation that I won't repeat, but if, if the council chose to buy additional property with the venue tax and then sell it, those funds could go into the general fund. That's perfectly legal, I don't think it's ethical, and I would never encourage the council to do that. But, so my answer to you is going to be, it would stay in the venue fund and has to be used through the venue projects that were acquired during that process.
Okay, so, and it's only used on the, but it's obviously used otherwise and not just on the properties we've acquired, correct?
Correct, there, we've got some other hazmat stuff. There are some other projects that I'm aware of that the staff and the committee are going to be looking at, but I'm not aware of any large land acquisition purchases, other than maybe some minor easements along some waterways. But I don't, I don't know that there's another $924,000 purchase hanging out there.
Okay, so right now we have 1.5 million that we can dedicate to our green space for waterways and such, so, okay. Well, I would be very interested to hear some citizen input. I know this, it got a lot of traction on the open gov, and so I thought, so I'm really interested to hear what other citizens have to say. And I guess, for now, I'm, I'll just be perfectly honest, I'm a bit undecided, so, thank you.
Sylvia, I would like to ask a follow-up question based on what you and Councilmember Medicus or Councilmember Reitz were just discussing. So, an example that for me stands out that, whether it's now or later, it will be important to the residents of Sunset Valley. Lone Oak, it is approximately seven acres, is that correct, Sylvia?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, so Lone Oak was originally purchased, not with venue tax money, it was purchased with general, general fund money. I didn't live here, so I've heard bits and pieces from residents. I don't know the actual truth. What I've been told is, some residents were under the belief that the city, similar to the uplands, they were sold the idea that there was going to be a concept built there. Later I heard, when I did live in the city, I heard discussions of, well, what if we sold all or a portion of it to be a residential lot so that it's being used versus creating a seven-acre, completely blank piece of property in the middle of a residential street? Council then made the decision to do a budget transfer of venue tax money to reimburse itself for the purchase of that property. So I can still follow that logic, although I didn't agree with it, I can follow it. What I then became worried about is that realtors and residents mistook that transfer as being an actual legal protection. And so using the example that you were just discussing with Doug today, that's always been my concern, is that even though we made that transfer, that doesn't create a permanent and perpetuity protection and assurance to the residents that that property will never, ever, ever be sold or used for something just because it was, that green tax, general fund transfer occurred.
Correct.
Can you follow that or speak to that? That's, that's, that's one of those things where I want to make sure residents have the correct information.
Correct, and that goes back to the conversation earlier, is if you bought it with green tax and then turn around and sold it, it could go into the general fund. And I believe the last presentation had discussion, which I think was probably some of the impetus for that conversation, was the money belongs to the municipality when something like that happens. And so, yes, it can be dumped into the general fund. And Doug, I don't know if you want to speak to that about our conversation?
Doug, is there anything you want to add? I can't hear Doug.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. No, there, there is a statute that says the city may dispose of venue property. As long as the property is in the city's hands, it must be dedicated to the venue project, but the city is given the express authority to dispose of property without any restriction.
And that's for residents who have wondered why it's important to me to distinguish it as the venue tax, known by the city of Sunset Valley as the green taxes, because I heard from more than one residence where they assumed that by calling it the green tax, that that meant that there was an actual green tax in the state of Texas, and that by purchasing things with the green tax, it was assured some extra legal protection.
No, it's got the same protection that any venue has, including a stadium. I'll also add, on other purposes, the green tax funds can be used to operate a venue project. So all the infrastructure or ownership of land that the city has, that it spends money on maintaining or operating or whatever it may be, that green tax funds can be used for that. And as for the, the example of spending money on stopping water loss, if the city got water, drinking water from the Edwards Aquifer, probably an argument could be made that reducing wastage of aquifer water would be a water quality purpose, and it has to benefit the Edwards Aquifer, that's what it's for. City doesn't get its water from there, so that, that somewhat easy argument can't be used, but the city council is the, has the discretion to determine is the expenditure of funds in furtherance of the protection, excuse me, protection of the watershed. So there's, there's some room, you can't be arbitrary about it, of course, but if there's some, some good basis for saying that it's going to be, it's going to benefit the water quality of Edwards Aquifer, then arguably you can use a green tax fund for that.
Thank you, Doug, and I, that's like the best idea I've heard all night. Is there a reason, do you know why we've never suggested that before? Or Carolyn, do you, do either of you have any historic recollection for why we didn't think of dealing with water loss issues as a green tax expenditure?
I'm not aware that it's ever been considered.
Yeah, I would agree with Doug on that, that we hadn't thought about that possibility. I mean, I was thinking, when Doug was saying this, I was like, oh, that opens up a different avenue that would be a very interesting avenue to explore.
It also seems like, from listening to the last Public Works meeting, that is a prior, a prior, I don't know how it actually got prioritized, but it was a concern, and I haven't heard anybody disagree that that would be an important issue to, to address. Councilmember Medicus, you are unmuted and you have the floor, and then Councilmember Ellett? And then we'll move to residents if we don't have any more council questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we do have citizens that have obviously put feedback in the town, open town hall, and I think there's residents that do want to speak. But in the Public Works ranking, which they've done, just for an example, there's three projects, $145,000 worth of projects that are listed under the venue tax that they've rated very high and wanting to see happen. And so that's just an example, the Valley Creek Park Gabian Project, the Lovegrass Water Quality Pond, which that has been on the list for repairs for a long time and needs to happen, and the Earnest Rubless Water Quality Pond repairs, those are things we need to do. I don't think we've been, as a council, as creative as we could be with utilizing that fund. And so I think it's important that we take the time to look at the ways we can utilize that fund for the purpose that our residents voted for us to use it for, and eighty, over 80% of our residents voted in favor of this. So I think we've heard loud and clear what our residents want, and I think we need to be more creative with how we handle the maintenance of and the care of the lands that we have bought and the water quality issues that we do have, to move some of that cost out of general fund into this venue tax, the green tax, because that's what it's for. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellett, and then Councilmembers' last call before I move to resident comments. Councilmember Ellett?
Thank you, and I think it is important to get to the residents' comments because I'll make mine brief. I just want to clarify a point. So we, we could take a portion of the green, the venue tax funds, we could elect to purchase a property that we would then say, we're purchasing this property because it would include and protect the aquifer, and, and yet, in a future date, council could decide to sell that to a developer even though it was bought with the venue tax funds. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yep.
And, and that's, I'm a council member, and that's kind of surprising to me, I would ask the question, how many residents don't know that?
I don't think many residents know that, and I think that, that's why, for me, there's two things that are important there. It's not about changing, it's, it's not about driving a conclusion about, for example, Lone Oak. It's to say, two things need to happen. We need to make sure we call it the venue tax that we use as the green tax, so that people understand ultimately the state of Texas treats it like a stadium or a venue, it's a city project. Two, if you're going to purchase stuff with green tax money and you want to add an additional protection, there's a second step that council needs to take. So if the real intent of the community is to add permanent protections that restrict development, that needs to be a clear second action that council takes when they purchase land with green tax money.
Absolutely, and, and you hear about cities all the time, building a stadium and then dedicating it to the team.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it.
Lisa Versace?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question. Why is the reserve set so high at 1.2 million? It just seems like a lot of pad in the budget. I'm not sure if that's there for an emergency flood or situation or what the intention was when that was originally set. And I just think we should look at that, because if we are going to kind of reevaluate this money and, and use it toward, you know, look into using it more toward the maintenance of our city on all the approved projects that we have, you know, we should look at maybe lowering that reserve, and I don't know what that would take. And then, in terms of using the green tax fund for public works projects, I mean, there are things on the agenda, like Karen had mentioned a few projects, and then I noticed there was one in the city council agenda on April 7th, 2020, there was a venue tax presentation that was made, and there was like, an item in there that said like wastewater line installation for one of the city streets. And, you know, that's, those are really, really important things to look at and identifying those areas where the community might need some, some projects to get underway. That's all I wanted to say, and, you know, we should probably also look at evaluating the current land that's been purchased with green tax money, and I kind of agree with Phil Ellett there, it just seems fundamentally wrong to purchase money that's meant to protect our water quality and then turn around and sell it for development. I would just question if it was, you know, originally intended for that, and most people probably voted for the green tax to open green space. You know, maybe that's a little bit, I think that might be, we might want to look at that as maybe a fundamental flaw and decide, you know, going forward if that's really what we want to do. That's all.
Thank you. Zoe?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Um, I, first I wanted to say, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members. I know you guys have been working many hours and doing a lot of research and a lot of preparation for this kind of unprecedented time, so I appreciate all the work that you've been doing. The reason I'm commenting is just because I saw this on the agenda as an item that the council would possibly seek action on, and to me, that meant, oh my God, they're going to get rid of the green tax. And I, I know we had a meeting since the previous council meeting, that, like, it was not on our agenda, and it is on our agenda, so I was really concerned that we weren't notified that this was like an active topic of conversation. And it is something we're planning on discussing on Thursday, because there are other projects that we think could possibly qualify for, for the green tax funds and could relieve the, the general revenue fund. And that's something we wanted to look into, but I just wanted to say, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that it sounds like some council members are considering abolishing the tax and replacing it with, nobody knows what, like, it doesn't seem like we have a well-fleshed idea. And so I totally support council members, Councilmember Medicus's plan or proposal to keep it off of this current budget or this current election cycle ballot, because we don't have a plan yet. We have a tax that voters overwhelmingly approved, and we're talking about replacing it with, ah, like, we don't have a plan. So I'm, I'm just concerned, and, um, I just wanted to reflect that. Like, I think that's why you saw so many citizen comments on it, because it feels like this came out of nowhere, and it feels like we have a tax that was approved by voters that's been working, that we've used for these purposes, and now, maybe we'll get rid of it, but we don't have a clear plan, we, we have to explain it to voters, and then there's also no, no certainty that voters will approve it, and it's not clear, it's clear that we would be losing something, but it's not clear what we would be gaining. So to me, it, like, there's a lot of uncertainty, and I don't see a clear reason why we would be doing this. I mean, sure, it's a possibility, but I just don't understand, first, the urgency, and second, I just don't feel like there's a clear vision of what we would be gaining. So I, I'm having a hard, a hard time understanding, like, as a, as a thought exercise, this is great, let's definitely talk about the green tax, but as in action, let's abolish it. Like, I feel like there's way more research to do, way more investigation, and it doesn't, it feels very premature to me. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for the time to, to make a statement.
Alfonso? Now, Alfonso, I have you twice, so I'm going to unmute both of the appearances that I have for you. You do have the floor, it looks, there you go.
Hello? Yeah. Alfonso Carmona, I, I will try to give it to you just a little, some information. In 2016, 17, I started working with the planning and environmental committee. I used to go there, and I was surprised, because when I started reading, I saw that the city has over 200 acres of greenness. 200 acres of green space, and 11 miles of trails. And I said, wow, how lucky we are. But why we are not taking care of that as supposed to be? So I used to be talking with Carolyn, and I said, why we don't have the same other cities where I was, then we have parks and recreation. So we take care of that. And they say, no, because in this case, we have the green tax. And from the green taxes only to purchase properties. Yeah, but we are using also some of that money for other purpose. So in 2016 and 2017, I start working with the budget with Carolyn. And I remember that we used to have 1.4 million dollars, and each year, other point four. So for the 217 to 18, we will have 1.8 million dollars. So we say, why, why, why we don't have something as a water quality? And we start working as a water quality reserves. And in that water quality reserves, we allocate almost 1 million dollars, land acquisitions, water quality, infrastructure. And in that budget, also, we say, we will have some operation. But the operation of what? Well, the city has some ponds that we have to take care. In Ernest Robles, we have one. Meadows, it has three. And we need to take care. And here, in Villas, we have another. And now, with the city facilities, we will have the big one. So we were looking that we have to spend a lot of money to take care of all of that ponds. And that was water quality. So this is part of the history about that water quality. And later, we say, okay, you have the, why we don't have some money for the projects? And that was the Valley Creek, the Cougar Creek. And if I remember, we say the Brody has bad for that hazards that we have on the streets. And they say, they never clean that traps that we have in Brody. Well, we can have money from this, because it's water quality protection. So we start in 2017, 2018. But I say, what happened? We are not moving with that projects. So public works, and in this area, nobody was doing nothing. So because we weren't doing nothing, we couldn't see advance. But we have the money. So now, we start moving just a little. And I was surprised today when I saw about some interest to move some of these taxes to another purpose. So in my opinion, the tax has a purpose, and is very, very important. And at this moment, we have very, very good budget, if we are using that properly. The problem is, we are not using that. So the projects, we procrastinate a lot. And that is the big, big deal. So I believe that we need to think, we need to, that planning and environmental committee has to study. And after that, they need to have a real, real proposals. And they need to start pushing to work. Because you know, this is not moving. And that passed me. I don't try to be bad. But when we used to work with the budget, we used to say, what happened? This money is not moving in public wars. What happened with that? Because nothing was moving as supposed to be. So this is the bad reality. And this is sometimes that we need to discuss. I hope that at this moment, it's important. I saw the comments from a lot of people from planning. So they need to sit down, they need to discuss, and they have a lot to be working with that. So thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Carmona is absolutely right when he says that the pond at city facilities is going to take up a lot of this budget. I don't even I don't even believe that anybody understands the impact and the maintenance cost of the city ponds. And and he's absolutely right. With the amount of money in this fund, there's no reason that some of these projects are on here. They should have been dealt with a number of years ago, kind of like the lift station conversation that we had.
So really, where I see this going is that we have a clear action on the table, which is not to touch the green tax on this ballot, which and is not to touch it through council action. But instead, what needs to happen is that P and E, similar to public works, they need to drill down and look at, really make sure that we are allocating the money judiciously, expeditiously, and that we're looking at all options, including new things that we hadn't thought of before.
Yes. Aneska Carmona has her hand up, but she's showing up as Alfonso Carmona.
No, I see her as Aneska. So
No, no, she sends a chat. She's having
Aneska, is that you? It looks like you are self muted. Aneska?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much. Okay, so I just wanted to mention a couple of things. The first is, I think we might have some a little bit of a miscommunication issue. I don't believe that all of us read the agenda wrong. I don't believe that it was clear that tonight, there was not going to be a possibility of taking a vote. I think that would even contradict the idea of you having to present this information in time for a ballot, if there wasn't a possibility of a vote being taken. And I don't think that it's good for us to think that on April 7, that was just the idea of maybe talking about this as bringing information later, because April 7 has a presentation on it as well. So I just want to get away from this narrative that we all just are we're overreacting, and we all just misread the signs, because the signs seem very clear to me. That being said, I think that's where a lot of the problems are coming from. If there was the chance that this would have been voted on tonight, why wouldn't the the planning committee be engaged between the first presentation and tonight, when we had a meeting smack dab in the middle on the 13th? So I do feel like there's a missed opportunity there to engage stakeholders. And I know that we're y'all are really good at engaging stakeholders, when it really helps drive an agenda, right? Because back in the day, three years ago, when we were going to move things from the general fund budget to the public works budget, I mean, from the general fund budget to the green tax, we did it. We did it through the committees. Committees drove that agenda. We had it in many meetings. So yes, as meticulous as this all is, and I'm pretty sure it was called green tax at the time, because voters really liked the idea of voting for a green tax. So I think, you know, I don't want to get really lost in the semantics of green or venue tax, because ultimately, the green tax was the right thing to call it at the right time. And it's not disingenuous, because it does go for topping water quality. Ultimately, that's what people voted on. And that's what they're expecting that this money is going to do. So I think, you know, we've played the shell game before of, you know, kind of seeing what other what other things we can transfer to green tax from 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 general fund to green tax fund expenses. I think we can continue playing. I don't think we've exhausted all the possibilities. You know, as my father tuned, I think some of the things we just haven't done yet, because we just haven't moved on those projects. But that doesn't mean that there's not still money that needs to be spent from that fund. I agree completely with Zoe. But beyond just the procedural thing, beyond not engaging the committee, beyond all that, I don't know what we're actually really voting for. When when if you always risk, once you abolish a tax, you think you're going to replace it with another tax, but there is actually the possibility that the voting public won't vote for it. And you're still going to be stuck, having to provide certain water quality measures that you're going to have to pay for. But now you're going to have to pay for them out of the green tax. I mean, out of the general fund money, because you no longer have the green tax. So I know that in the best case scenario, what this looks like is that this one green tax gets abolished, it's replaced with this infinite more money in the general fund. But even then, my concern is, I don't know what we would do with it. Because, I mean, from what I read, and I kind of had to go into the comptroller's office to read about it, about economic development corporations, you could end up with like a scenario where if you do do an economic development corporation, and the council appoints a board, and I have questions about what that process would look like, if that's the route that we get taken. But that's Zoe's point, we don't know the where we're going with this. Or if we do know where we're going, let's just say, we don't all know where we're going with this. And so I don't think that we're in any kind of position to move to action on it without clearly defining that for the public. I think the reason that we've been so successful in passing taxes, whether it was the crime tax or the green tax, is because the public had an idea of what we're voting for and why, and they wanted to contribute to our community. I think we still have the option of seeing what else can be paid for out of general fund with this green tax. And I still think we have some time to think about it. I agree with Melissa in the sense that you never want to necessarily take this option off the table, and you can't find further councils. But I don't think that the I don't think
Aneska, your time time is up.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I wanted to ask a question. Within the green tax, the reserve is 1.2 million dollars. The bank balance we have right now is 1.5 million. The reserve is within that number. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then I want to call the question.
We have a call the question from Councilmember Rosen Garden. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, sorry, councilmembers, please submit your votes via chat. All those in favor say aye, and those opposed say nay. This is not on the action, it's on the call the question. Sylvia, if you would please read it into the record.
Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Ellet, aye. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Reeves, aye.
The vote passes unanimously. So for residents who had your hands up to be so you understand what just happened, a councilmember asked to call the question, which means we immediately stop deliberation and discussion, and we take a vote from councilmembers as to what they want to do. It was just unanimously voted by council that they want to take a vote on this item. I would now ask that the city secretary read back the motion and allow the motion maker in second to confirm that that is what they intended the motion to be.
Okay, Reggie?
Okay. Councilmember Medicus made a motion to pursue to not to pursue changing the venue slash green tax for the next election cycle, and that council will not vote to eliminate the tax. Councilmember Gonzalez, seconded it.
Councilmember Medicus, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's stated correctly.
Councilmember Gonzalez, is that stated correctly?
That is my understanding.
Councilmembers, please cast your vote via chat. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. And Sylvia, would you please read the vote back?
Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Ellet, nay. Councilmember Reeves, aye.
Motion passes four to one. Councilmembers, it is now 10 o'clock, and by ordinance, our meetings are not to extend past 10 o'clock. I'm looking for a motion to move items 13 and 14 to the next agenda. Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I move to table agenda, item number 13 and 14 to the next agenda.
Councilmember Medicus? Councilmember Medicus?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Please cast your vote via, please cast your vote via chat, so that Sylvia can read it into the record.
Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Reeves, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Ellen, aye.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
Mayor, I am going to ask that we move to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Councilmember Medicus?
Second.
All those in favor, please cast your vote, yea, nay. Sylvia, please read the votes back, and then I'll call the time.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, aye. Councilmember Medicus, aye. Councilmember Gonzalez, aye. Councilmember Ellet, aye. Councilmember Reeves, aye.
Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned at 10:01 PM.
Good night, everybody.